May I please have everyone stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to number three, elections. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution forty-six, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, declaring the results of the special election held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution forty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And we do have an announcement here, and I think, Ron, are you going to handle this?
Announcement.
The announcement?
Yes, thank you. Shannon Ramsey Chessman, who is a certified public accounting, certified government finance officer.
Serves on the Board of Directors of Florida Government Finance Association. She's here to make a presentation to the city and the finance department, and we welcome you and thank you for being here tonight and taking the time to show up here.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening. As Ron mentioned, my name is Shannon Ramsey Chessman, and I'm the acting COO for the Clerk and Comptroller Sharon Bach. I'm on the Florida Government Finance Officers Board of Directors, and I am a state representative for the National GFOA. And it's in that capacity that I'm here tonight, and I'm honored, thank you very much, for allowing me to be here on behalf of the GFOA, to present this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Palm Beach Gardens. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award Program has been in operation since nineteen eighty-four, and the purpose of the program is to encourage governments to prepare budget documents of the highest quality for the benefits of their citizens and other parties that have a vital interest in the budget process. During the program's existence, it has gained widespread recognition among public-sector budget professionals as an important indicator of a government's commitment to accountability to its stakeholders. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the city had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which incorporate the guidelines of the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting. This is not the first time that this city has received this honor, and not the first time I've presented to you, so again, thank you for that. Today's presentation actually marks the twenty-first consecutive year that the city has received this award, and this record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and hard work of numerous individuals, including Finance Administrator Allen Owens, Deputy Finance Administrator Mary Anderson Pickle, and the entire finance department. It also reflects a high degree of dedication, leadership, and guidance of the City Council and City Manager Ron Ferris. The GFOA hopes that this award to the City of Palm Beach Gardens will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege on behalf of the GFOA to present to the City of Palm Beach Gardens the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations.
Thank you. Allen. Allen, Mary, do you want to say anything?
Just thank you to Shannon for making the presentation tonight. I'd really like to, again, thank Mary for all the work that she does and our staff, but Mary is primarily the one that is responsible for putting both the detailed line item budget that you see every time at this year, but also the final budget document that comes out around December that gets submitted to GFOA for the consideration of the award. So again, congratulations to Mary, really.
And no, thank you.
Sorry, I'm not feeling all that well, and I'm trying to be as organized as possible. Items of resident interest and board committee reports. Carl, would you like to go first today?
Thank you, Mayor. Sure, I'll go first. I'm going to try and make a joke, because this happened a few weeks ago when I visited one of our first-grade classes, and I'm going to try and put it out there how it happened. So I'm visiting, I think her name was Miss Anderson, first-grade kid, Chief Kitzrow, okay, for coming. And, you know, I was there for a little bit, and I got to know the children, got to know the teacher, and class started, so I'm sitting down at the side, teacher's standing up in front of the class, and I guess she's trying to make a self-esteem point, and she asked the kids, she's like, "Does anybody feel that you're stupid? Does anybody in this class feel like you're dumb?" Class was kind of silent, and I'm like, "What kind of question is that?" And for a second there, she goes, "See? Nobody's dumb." And at that moment, this little kid named Johnny stood up, and I could see her face turn absolutely white, and she's like, "Johnny, do you feel you're stupid?" And he's like, "No, ma'am, I just hate to see you standing up here all by yourself." Anyway. All right, I'm going to talk about, another items for public interest is, I'm going to take a minute to speak about the three ballot questions. It's an absolutely item of public interest, and I'm not going to shy away from it. The first thing I thought when seeing how the votes were tabulating to each question was I thought educated voters. That's what I thought, how they were voting, I thought the people were educated. I'm glad to see the voters recognize that the charter needed to be cleaned up. To me, that may be the overall and the most important issue on the ballot, and I hope the voter's voice on that question does not get challenged in court. I'm okay with the city manager having to live in the city. If somebody applies for that position, qualifies, and gets hired for that position, and you do not live here, pack your bags and get a moving truck. Once again, the citizens have spoke on that matter. Regarding the term limits, over the last year or more, I don't think we were any more popular than the influenza virus that's been going around.
I got it.
Yeah, and you got it. And here's the deal, I've said it several times on that topic. My direction on all three ballot questions was the community's basic fundamental right to vote. Minority or majority, everybody has a right to be a part of the democratic process. I say that because I was told that over and over again, right here in the council chambers. I will say out loud, I was on the minority side of term limits. I feel that three three-year terms, as the Charter Review Board suggested, was a good direction, or two-four, as another council member campaigned. People have told me that I won my election because of term limits, and I'll say this again, and probably for the last time, I lost my election. I fought for term limits in court, thus having the change on the council that you see in front of you today. Term limits issue started long before any of us got here. For me, there is nothing more to be said about it. The majority has voted, and it's done. Going forward with a positive outlook, I hope the creativity of an ever-changing council will prove to be effective way to govern this city. I started as a council member here with two thoughts, Platts and Parks, no other real agendas. I support the business, I support technology, that's a given, but regarding the Platts, I'm happy to see our grant programs and good old-fashioned work ethics, at times in partnership with Christ Fellowship, are continuing to help the underprivileged in our city. With the parks to include the Pocket Park on Holly Drive, I and most of us will be a part of, most likely, the largest park to ever be built in Palm Beach Gardens, and it's for the children, and I've been proud to be a part of it, and we'll see what happens in the next six months. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. Mark.
I couldn't have said that any better myself, Carl. Thank you for kind of stating that. I think, I'm going to just make a quick comment about the elections and then move on. The hardest thing that people ask when you decide to run for office and actually get in office is to say that sometimes you're going to do something that's not necessarily popular, that maybe isn't the best thing, that maybe these people aren't going to agree with you, and stick your neck out there. Well, you know, we decided through a process that we all agreed on and believed in, to put questions back to the voters to clarify. I don't apologize for sticking my neck out. I know some people think that I'm corrupt, or power-hungry, whatever you want to call it. I can only say that I'm proud of the process, I'm proud of the fact that the voters went out and did what they did, they obviously educated themselves on what they wanted, and that's the way it goes, and this is democracy, and sometimes you are part of a winning vote, and sometimes you're part of a losing vote, and you know what? It doesn't make a difference one way or the other. There are people in this country that aren't happy with what's happening in Washington, and there are people that are, and that's just the democracy that we live in. So I would be happy to serve my last one and a half years, and maybe more, if that's something I choose to do and the voters accept, or not. This is democracy, and this is what America's built on, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud of the fact that we had this debate and now that we can move on. I only hope, and I asked the city manager to make a small report later on, that we can remember what this city truly is about. It's not about a charter, it's not about term limits, it's about the wonderful things that this city has to offer, the great way the city has grown, and what we anticipate the future of this city to be, and I'm only hopeful that I can be a part of it as we go forward. So outside of that, in terms of things that we did, we went to a couple debates and then the Chamber Breakfast, we had a great League of Cities lunch at Sand Hill Crane, the food was fantastic, everybody was raving about how wonderful our clubhouse is, so thanks to the golf course and our staff for organizing that. Palm Beach North Economic Development Committee, which was quite interesting, about the future of transit, which is, I think, something that we all have to discuss. Mothers Demand Action last night, and today, in about three hours, will be the time that my oldest son, Adam, was born. It's happy birthday to you, Adam. I'm sure you're not watching, because you really could care less about being here or watching what your dad is doing, but happy birthday to Adam. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Rochelle.
So this month, I got to have a little bit of summer with the family, but there were still some interesting things going on. I attended the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council event, the League of Cities luncheon, as Mark mentioned, thanks to Patty and the staff. It was amazing. The League of Cities wants to come back every month for lunch here, but they're going to have to wait their turn again. And there was a Palm Beach North Chamber Tea, complete with hats and everything, but I also met with the Moms Demand Action co-chairs, and we met with Chief Shannon and Chief Pate to discuss possible collaboration on some gun safety programs, and I got to take a tour of the Tactical Training Center and was just blown away, not to, I guess that wasn't the right choice of words, but it was awesome, and I was very impressed. The highlight of the month for me was my Leadership Palm Beach County Retreat, and we get underway this week, and I am looking forward to bringing back everything that I'm going to learn about the county and all of the important relationships that I'm going to build and bring that back to the city and our work here.
Matthew.
Okay, it was a busy month. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee meeting, the Chamber of Commerce breakfast with Dr. Donald Fanoi, who spoke to us about our Palm Beach County school system, Palm Beach Gardens Recreation Advisory Board meeting, I attended the League of Cities meeting at Sand Hill Crane, and I can tell you that the other council members and mayors from the other cities were so impressed with our beautiful clubhouse and the excellent food that James Gelfen provides in our clubhouse. For anybody who hasn't been there, you should know that the food's excellent, the service is exceptional, and, being the chief one on council, I can tell you that the prices are very good. I also attended the banquet that supported our Palm Beach Gardens Kiwanis Club, the League of Cities luncheon at the Sailfish Marina, and finally, the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center reception. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, it was also another busy month, and yes, like everyone else, I did the League of Cities meeting, the membership meeting, and also the board meeting, Palm Beach North Chamber. I went to La Posada for a reception to introduce businesses and locals to the new facility there, and also, on a separate occasion, went there for coffee with the mayor. Forum Club Board meeting and General Membership Meeting with Sean Spicer was very entertaining. Attended the Arc of the Palm Beach's Jabapalooza at Palm Beach State College with Chief Breyer and Chief Shannon to introduce the local businesses to the clients of the Arc, and it was very wonderful to see these young adults who wouldn't normally be exposed to the breakers or the fire department, really learning a skill from the people that were there, and for the people that were there, the businesses, actually learning that there were clients out there that could use these jobs. So it was, for those of you that weren't in attendance, it was really a heartwarming thing to do. Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency Steering Committee meeting, Transition meeting, Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, Strategic Planning meeting for TPA, Palm Beach North Economic Development. I'd like to thank David Reyes, Chief Shannon, and Chief Breyer for helping me with the Knights of Columbus with the, an emergency preparedness discussion, was very well-attended. Like Rochelle, the Palm Beach North Women in Business Tea, and since I didn't have a hat, I took my Palm Beach Gardens hard hat and tied a ribbon to it, and that was my hat. And dozens of constituent services meetings. And finally, I'd like to thank all of those who attended the funeral for Kevin McCarty. Given the number of people that were in attendance, Kevin will be dearly missed. And on the topic of elections, I would like to thank, and I wrote it down, because I wanted to make sure I said it properly. On the elections, I'd like to thank all of those who came out to vote. The Volunteer Charter Review Committee brought several suggestions to the council, five of which were put on the ballot to let the voters decide the direction of the city. This was a difficult task, especially for a new council, but as it says in the charter, there should be a review every five years. The right thing to do is not always the easiest thing to do. The mission of the Charter Review Committee and the City Council was to let the voters decide. This is their constitutional right. This is not about power, this is not about money, this is about stability for this city, which has a ninety-four percent approval rating. This is about a city that sees over twenty percent of its ad valorem taxes paid by just five retail centers in the city. This is about a city that needs economic development to help pay for the services that are priorities for our residents and keep families here. Without parks and recreation, police and fire, restaurants, colleges, Class A office space, medical services, and retail opportunities, residences would be finding other places to live. Everyone on this council and everyone on the Charter Review Committee agreed that term limits should remain, but that the length of those terms should be adjusted for the growth and retention of institutional knowledge. Matt Lane wanted to extend the length of term limits to two four-year terms, thus making a total of eight years. The rest of the council preferred three terms of three years for a total of nine. Everyone on this council believed in extending term limits to keep the city running smoothly. This is a hundred and sixty million dollar business and has a board of directors of five, that would be the five people that sit here, and now every five to six years, that entire council will be completely turned over and a brand-new council with no institutional knowledge will be put in place, just as the situation is now. After three years, we are still learning our jobs, and many of the projects that have come before us, like Avenir, with a twenty-year build-out, will now have to re-educate three more councils. And as for those that think we're doing this for the money, I'll be happy to share my paycheck, which says I make fourteen dollars and ninety-nine cents an hour, based on a forty-hour workweek, and from the list of things you heard me attend, you know that I'm working a little bit more than forty hours for the city that I love, and I do it gratefully. And I'll be happy to share my retirement IRA statement that says I've earned just over eight thousand dollars for the past two and a half years and five months, with me also contributing. There is no additional pension afforded to this current council, just a small IRA, another fallacy floating around out there that we're making hundreds of thousands of dollars. And as Mr. Owens will explain in the budget presentation, although there is a large line item for retirement under the City Council portion of the budget, the city, as required by state statute to return, is required by state statute to return forty-eight point four seven percent of the elected official's salary to the Florida retirement system for pensions of all eligible Florida retirement system employees all over the state, that includes our police and our fire departments. I would like to send, to thank the city for supplying us with health insurance, as it does with the rest of our five hundred employees. I would like to thank the city for supporting local nonprofits, another item that comes out of the City Council budget. I would like to thank the city for setting aside dollars for professional services that may be needed. As history has shown, we have sometimes needed them in the past, but not always. It is these carryover dollars that have been budgeted but go unused that have helped grow our budget stabilization fund, and it is that fund that helped cover the two million dollar cost of Hurricane Irma. I would like to thank the council for setting aside dollars to educate the council through conference attendance and membership in state, county, and local agencies that help us to learn about important issues facing not only our city, but those around us, and giving us the opportunity to collaborate with them. As the expression goes, "A rising tide lifts all boats." The success of our neighboring cities is paramount to ours. Thank you. So, I think we're all done with that, and we now will take comments from the public. I have several cards. I have Gerald Richmond, Fred Schiebel, and Sid Dienerstein, and Steen Erickson, in that order, please. Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm Gerald Richmond. I live in Ballin Isles, Nineteenth St. George Place, Palm Beach Gardens. I am an attorney, and I represent Sears, and what I basically want to do is just address the council briefly on a, what I call, very positive note. We want to urge the city to use its authority to seize this opportunity to add a world-class sports retailer to the community. There's no other similar business in the area. The stores, the Gander Store, the Sports Authority, they're all gone. Dick's is in forty-seven states at the present time, that has almost eight hundred stores and is going to expand to nine hundred. All that Sears and Dick's were seeking, and are seeking, is to have a minor entrance change in signage, with only Dick's on the facade, not Dick's and Sears on that facade, and simply replacing the Sears sign and centering an entrance. There will be no guns, no ammunition, no repairs of guns, and that would be done by a document that would be contractual, so Dick's could not change that for the entire time it's there. There is, with regard to the PUD ordinance in the city, Macy's has got five signs, PF Chang's has got two signs, Brio has three signs, and most importantly, the Brio sign was approved in two thousand and three without Forbes okaying that, basically, that change. What we're asking for, in effect, is no more than a routine waiver. The sole issue is Forbes' permission. Forbes will not sign a routine waiver. It is permissive, not mandatory, under the PUD, under the city's own rules. The approval is an important governmental power, it has been ceded in effect by the city to Forbes, and Forbes can arbitrarily say no. It's a catch-22, because in effect, Forbes says, "Comply with the PUD," but then Forbes will not go ahead and allow, sign off, to allow any kind of a change to the PUD, which is just necessary for the signage. So in effect, we won't cooperate to let you go ahead and comply with the legal requirements of the city. The city has the ability to prevent this application of Sears and Dick's from ever being considered by the city. This is not, as your city attorney said, being neutral, it's essentially ceding the city's authority to Forbes. You've got the choice. You were not here when the prior unconstitutional resolution was passed at Forbes' request, and Sears tried everything it could to avoid controversy with the city, and that's exactly what we want to avoid. In short, you're giving the decision to Forbes when it is yours, and we ask that this new council, you weren't here back in two thousand and fourteen, not be led down the same unfortunate path, but to act in the best interest of the community. Forbes will have its say in the process, and the city will decide, but not if Forbes is given an arbitrary veto. All we want, and all we urge, is a fair opportunity. We want to work this out with the city, and we greatly appreciate an opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred Schiebel.
I just want to make a couple of comments about the election and then move on. I think that we've probably talked between us about it over the last year, and I want to be brief about it. I think that before the Charter Committee, Charter Review Committee was formed, a lot of residents were telling you that, both individually and collectively, that term limits changes were not what the people wanted, but I understand the arguments you made. I understand the lack of institutional memory, the frequent wholesale turnover, you talked about the lack of choice in the number of terms that was originally on the ballot. I also understand that most of you believe that there wouldn't be a lot of opposition, that it made sense what you were trying to do. I get that. I also get that the outcome wasn't what you wanted. I don't want to revisit the arguments for and against, I don't want to bring up the tactics that were used that I think got a lot of people mad in the last three weeks. I think that's behind us, I hope it is. The results, I hope you agree, though, are conclusive. Adding terms was rejected by the voters by a two-to-one margin. On a neighborhood level, looking at the precincts, almost every single precinct in the city voted no on question one and question three by fifteen percent or more. Usually has a good variation when you look at an election, particularly in March. You find that, you know, the city's made up of gated communities, ungated, you know, older neighborhoods, newer neighborhoods. There's a lot of differences, and typically, there's a difference in the way people vote in the city, regionally. Not this time, I've never seen it this solid before. Your campaign had asked for a yes vote on all three questions. The opposition, what there was of it, asked for a no vote on all three questions, pretty simple. But the voters, in their wisdom, they split the difference. By approving the Charter cleanup question number two with pretty good margin, sixty percent, they basically said that they understood what was at stake here, and I think it was a compelling, it was a compelling campaign that you put on, and I think it was, it's worth it it passed. Okay, one and two, on the other hand, went down. Now, it's been over a week since the election, I don't know, I guess I know how some of you feel, because you gave us comments tonight, but whatever you're thinking, please let it be behind us, and let's not do this again. Okay? That's what I wanted to say. Thank you. Sorry?
Thank you, Fred. Mr. Dienerstein.
Good evening, Sid Dienerstein, Fifteenth St. George, and my friend Fred's going to have to wait three minutes to put this behind us, because here's how I came to spend three minutes saying, these are the lessons I think we learned from the election. Number one, the average Palm Beach Gardens voter is well above average. Number two, the voters don't want the city treasury to be the city council campaign account. Number three, the city attorney works for you and us, not the other way around. Number four, the November twenty-fourteen term limits vote was a referendum on that city council. The fact that they refused to go away reflects poorly on this city council. Number five, the Palm Beach Post did your job. They educated the public without advocating for a side. And my last comment is, I want to thank people that haven't been thanked and should be thanked, some of whom are here, Linda, Barbara, Iris, Fred, Mike, and others who aren't here, James, and if you want, you can stand up, because you deserve to get your applause, and if you don't want, you can stay seated and protect your own anonymity. They all give of their time and money freely, asking nothing in return. They are the best this town has to offer, and at next month's meeting, you may want to honor them. Thank you.
Steen.
Okay, so if we could take a collective breath here, and this is a non-political issue, so if we can just, anyway, Steen Erickson, four-three-zero, Elm Avenue, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here on behalf of the Fire Chiefs Association of Palm Beach County to invite you to this year's nine eleven remembrance ceremony. This year is going to be down at the Boynton Beach Campus of Christ Fellowship Church at seven PM on September eleventh. Virtually every fire department and law enforcement agency is going to have people there, in the capacity of uniform personnel, honor guard, pipes and drums. It's a very good It's a very good event for those who have been here before. We've been fortunate in the past years, we were canceled last year by Irma, but we were fortunate in the past years to have it in the North End, but there wasn't a venue available up here, so it now is down in Boynton Beach. So if you were available, we'd love to have you there. It's a wonderful opportunity to see what we do. And of course, we acknowledge all the nearly 3,000 lives that were lost on that day, but it's, it's dear to our hearts as first responders, because it is the single event with the largest loss of life for fire and police personnel. That's why we try to continue to keep that tradition going and that remembrance going. So that's, that's what we're doing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're done with comments from the public, and I would like to ask the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. A few items to bring to your attention here tonight. The first would be, happy to announce that the city's purchasing department once again received an annual achievement excellence in procurement award from the National Procurement Institute. Palm Beach Gardens is one of 23 cities that received this award in Florida, and one of 65 cities throughout the United States and Canada. The award criteria includes innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership, which all means protection and savings of taxpayers' dollars in the procurement process. This is the fifth consecutive year that the city has received this award, all due to the hard work and the creativity of our well-deserved purchasing department. And we would like to recognize the members of the purchasing department at this time for this award. Kumra, if you would please stand. You want to give him the award? You feel up to it? Thank you. The next item I'd like to bring to your attention is, as you're well aware, that we have had several discussions at this council meeting in the requests that we have had for, to assist the county's school police department with supplying police officers in the elementary schools, for the time being, until the district police, the school district police can catch up with the hiring process. And eventually, the plan is to replace them, although I don't know that that's a great idea. I like them right where they're at, and I think they're welcome to right where they're at. But at any rate, we said, "Yeah, sure, let's go do it." And this council was very supportive in our efforts to put police officers in the elementary schools. We also are assisting a little bit and helping out when we can in the high schools now as well, as far as our resources will take us. So we began, you passed Resolution 42, providing for this event to occur, and providing for the security agreement with the Palm Beach County School Police Department. And it's our pleasure, our pleasure, to provide those services through extra-duty details, again, as far as our resources will take us. So I have asked that the chief of the school, the chief of police of the school district of Palm Beach County, and that's a mouthful, Chief Frank Kitzler, to come and give you an update on how things are going. And it's, I know Frank personally, for a number of years, he served in Jupiter for thirteen years. He's got thirty-five years of law enforcement experience, a lot of it up in Virginia as a police chief, Fairfax County, I believe it was, and another place called Portsmouth, Virginia. So he's been around. He's got a management degree from National Lewis University, Masters in Public Administration from University of Phoenix. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy in 2000, which is quite prestigious. So it's no surprise that Frank has taken on this monumental task, and taken it on quite well with some creative thinking, and we appreciate what you're doing for our children and all the children throughout the county. And that's enough from me. I'd like to hear from you, how things are going, as far as you're concerned.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Ferris. First, before I give you the report, I really want to start out with a big thank you. You all have been nothing short of amazing at the, the level of participation and commitment to the schoolchildren here. You know, really, I think Mr. Ferris has kind of given you a fairly accurate picture, but I want to say this, I have not had to ask for anything. So, you know, I had not come forward and asked for a thing. The city manager has graciously worked with us. Chief Shannon, we talk about the FBI National Academy. Chief Shannon and I went to the same academy class, so I know him for many, many years. Had the opportunity to work with Chief Step for many years, and so the foundation is really strong there. So before I give you a report, I just want to say thank you for all that you have done. And, and I can tell you, it's made my life and my job a lot easier. I know that the parents and the, and the teachers and the school kids in this city are really grateful for it. So thank you very much. So, you know, if I've been in this job, I think sixty days now, and it's been the longest five years of my life. And so we've accomplished quite a bit over the last sixty days. Of course, you know, the Stoneman Douglas Act requires that we put a police officer in every school. Just to give you the, the scope of things, that's 187 schools, 200,000 children, 23,000 employees, spread out over 800 square miles. So it's been a very daunting task, and I'm proud to say that we've accomplished that task, and do in large part because of the cooperations that we're getting from, you know, people like Chief Shannon and our city manager and you. But from my perspective, having been a city police chief for a long period of time, this is really something quite remarkable to watch, because not only do we get a police officer in every school, but when you think about it, that required city councils, and mayors, and managers, and city attorneys to go through documents and all kinds of things. And, and so it really has been quite a remarkable undertaking. We currently have thirteen municipalities partnering with us in the schools. And you all have not only helped us in the elementaries, but as Mr. Ferris said, also in the high schools. Unfortunately, we got put to the test pretty early with an incident at Palm Beach Central High School a couple of weeks ago. And so as part of the whole reunification process and incident command, we needed to bring the, the local team back here to the high school under police escort, and quickly spoke with Chief Shannon. And within minutes, you guys were at the schools and securing the facility over there and waiting for everybody to arrive, and it's just been really remarkable. So I'm happy to say, over the last sixty days, that I've hired 27 new officers. I have seven more in the final stages right now, so we have 34 on our way to 75. And so it's been, it's been a pretty big task. I'm also going to tell you that we are not compromising, you know, our values and not compromising the levels of experience and professionalism to get those numbers to where they need to be. And so we got a lot of the work we still have left to do. We've been working quite a bit on emergency response plans, next steps, continuity of operations, sharing of information, and the list goes on and on and on. And I really think that our schoolchildren are much better off for the, for the amount of work that's been going on. And I think, in closing, I would say that the outcome of this is going to be something pretty remarkable, as I'm seeing this develop. Municipalities and cities have a greater understanding of what's happening in the schools. The schools have a greater working relationship with the municipalities. Our schoolchildren are really getting the experience of meeting and knowing the police officers, as Chief Shannon will tell you. You know, several other schools here are really just raving about the level of service and the officers that you all have been putting in the schools. And so I think at the end of this, when we get down the road and eventually get everybody hired, even though the contracts will no longer be in place, I think the long-term results of this would be pretty remarkable. So with that, I'd like to just say a big thank you again, and I'm sure I feel confident to say that on behalf of Dr. Fanoi, our superintendent, our leadership team, and the entire school board. We couldn't be where we are today without you, so thank you. And with that, if you have any-
Thank you, Chief. Ron, do you have anything else on your report?
And with that, I would like to continue to say that in conversations with Councilman Marciano and a couple other of you, and some of the work that we're doing out in the community is often neglected or overlooked, some of the performances that go on within the community that are commendable, and some of the employees' involvement in different aspects from different departments. It's truly amazing, we get a lot of compliments coming in all the time by various sources, either by social media, you know, and other ways, notes, letters, awards, recognitions, that the unsung heroes within this community that are delivering the services on a day-to-day basis is sometimes not brought to light. So just if you'll indulge me just for a few minutes, we have a couple of things here I'd like to bring to your attention. First off, I'd like to show you a thank you note from Marsh Point Elementary School Principal. And again, this is our police officers providing services, security services in Marsh Point. And you can see that she took the time to write and tell us how awesome our police officers are and how they love our police officers. And actually, it creates a lot less stress for her on her daily activities. I wouldn't want to be a school principal for anything. But here's some of the things that are going on with some of our officers. I'm not sure who won the basketball game, but I'm pretty sure the short fellow outlasted the big fellow. And frisbee playing. It's, it's getting an opportunity to build relationships that'll last a lifetime and create some positive images of how our police officers can be trusted. Here you can see the House of Hope, Place of Hope did a K-19 demonstration, and we do education informational performances and of these types, and the trainings all the time out in the community. They did an incredible job. Thank you for the officers. The next one would be kudos for, in the Parks and Recreation Department, we do, they perform on a, you know, an entire weekly basis, all types of different activities. Here's just an example of a pickleball tournament that was extremely well organized enough to where city residents would take the time to say, "Thank you for a well-organized and operated event." Another event in our cultural arts program, "Thank you very much, your staff did a tremendous job." And it indicates the character of the individual, about the kindness, the care, the, the attention to detail, and just a pleasure to work with. These are our employees. And in the building official, Scott Danioski and his crew, we get a letter from Jan Burke, "Just left the office in Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you for your help with the permit issue. Your staff is kind and very professional. I know in today's world that an extra smile and kindness goes a long way." This is the personality and the type of individual that we hope all of our employees exhibit. Again, thank you to the building inspectors. This guy's been in construction for 25 years. This is his favorite town to build in, bar none. The office staff is always pleasant, inspectors among the best I've dealt with. Scott Danioski, Building Department, assisted with code violations. Can you believe someone's writing us a thank you letter for a code violation? So anyway, it shows you that, you know, even in, in the code area, that, that people are treated with respect, and it's, and it's a better way, a better thing that we do. Building Department, again, from a contractor, about how the staff dealt with him with the utmost courtesy, professional, always upbeat and positive. Tennis Center. Imagine how difficult it is working into schedules, a tennis league of all of the adults that we have over there, which are probably 100 to 175. Again, appreciate your cheerful smiles and great attitude. Delivering Services. A letter from Reverend Walter Arnold, a police chief, about Officer Dowling when the reverend's wife was in a car accident, and how she was touched, completely impressed, remarkable officer for his care for us. It's just amazing about how these police officers deal with so many different situations. Sergeant Soul, safety demonstration at Trinity. Brought joy to my heart to see there are still people that care. We have two letters here showing that Officer Lawrence, appreciation for Officer Lawrence helping install a car seat. We do this on a routine basis in the police department. We have people that are trained, that train residents on how to install car seats properly. They've been doing it for years, for years. Officer Cheryl Barr, Richard Martins, car broke down, wife had a surgical procedure. They assisted on the scene, got them to another car, got them to the hospital. This is outstanding. This is above and beyond the call of duty. A lady here expresses appreciation that after her husband passed away, that Officer Neves and Howell gave her a great deal of comfort. Very sad, stressful situation. These are people dealing with people in, in providing a calming effect in situations. Phone call, commending Officer Stares Morales. Misplaced Dolly. Simple little figure, simple little issue as far as someone moving, and they can't find the equipment that they need to move. They call the police department. Police department comes out, they render assistance. They don't shrug their shoulders, they don't walk away, they don't get in their car and go. They render assistance wherever they can. Detective Bashir actually performed a, conducted a training session for the Jupiter Inlet Colony. We get commendations from other cities where we go and provide training and education. Here's Officer Matt Tuman. This was a resident who showed, expressing how he showed concern and respect, and knowledge and efficiency and kindness was displayed, and handwritten note, took the time to write it. At our fire open house, Inspector Castillo and Aaron Landry, this was a child that was timid, shy. He brought out in her the opportunity to actually hold that fire hose, and it was a big step, according to the parents, for this child to trust someone enough to allow them that close and to hold that hose. She feels much safer now. Again, pickleball tournament, our staff, good teachers, enjoyed the whole experience and- in teaching pickleball. Another code enforcement, thank you, upbeat. Supporting citizens, helping citizens figure out how to resolve their code enforcement issues. Here's one through the website, another one complimenting our code officer, another one about a recent auto accident, how thoughtful and courteous and helpful our officers are, and our fire team as well. Another one about code enforcement, how our code enforcement officers were exceptionally helpful in answering questions, guiding them through the process so they could comply with their code issues. And this last one here, George Vincent, captures what I believe our employees are about. Oftentimes, we forget it's the little things that make a difference. Sincere greeting with eye contact, knowledgeable employee, those types of things. I received all of that and more today in your permitting office. I entered with an issue and was treated above my expectations, received a call from you as well. Very impressed with the service. Your office treated me with courtesy and compassion today. I think that this presentation, and these are just some of the examples, we probably have a stack like this now, over the past year or so, of these types of commendations that don't get the kind of recognition that they need, and I thank you for bringing this to my attention. I think you're absolutely right. This is what we're all about, this is what we strive for, and I think that our residents benefit from our employees who are trained and very cooperative in trying to provide the best service we can for all of our citizens and those who are not citizens as well. And it's those people right over there that see to it that this is the type of services delivered in this community, and I think it sets us apart from all the others. With that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Ron. That was very well said. And thank you too, as I say all the time, as many people will listen, we are not staff, we're family, and you all go above and beyond, and thank you. All right, I think we're actually at the point of the consent agenda in this meeting tonight, so.
I'm going to pull item F.
Okay. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus item F, please?
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda minus item F.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So may I please have the clerk read the title?
This is a purchase award, ma'am, I don't have to read a title.
Okay. Kumra, are you going to give us a presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Kumra, Purchasing Contracts Director, and the agreement before you is an invitation to bid for mowing and landscaping services specifically for streets and parks. The city has an existing agreement for mowing and landscaping services that has three contractors. However, because of the developments we're doing with Johnson Dairy Road, Gardens Park, the Public Service Operations Center, when the option came for renewing it for two years, consulting with the department, the decision was staying to go back out, add those additional locations, and bid this out. So we advertised a competitive invitation to bid on May 9th. We got eight bids. We posted an award recommendation on July 19th, and on July 20th, we had a bid protest filed by Total Maintenance Services. On July 27th, in consultation with the city attorney, the bid protest was dismissed. This is a tabulation that you can't read because it's too tiny. So I give you an idea what the eight bidders responded to. This is an Excel workbook, and each company is, each company is one of the sheets in the workbook. So we had Brightview Landscape, we had CAECO Landscaping, we had Duval Landscape Service Professionals, Precision Landscaping, Property Works with the incumbent vendor, and Superior Landscaping, and Total Maintenance. This is a summary of the bids we received. As you can see, we did an award to the lowest bidder. And the reason for that is because the lowest bidder at the time the vendor submitted the bid was not a legally registered company, and so we could not award to them. They did register after, 11 days after the bid's opening date, but, and then filed the subsequent bid protest, as I said, was dismissed by the city attorney myself. We did a pre-award inspection of the next lowest bidder, Precision Landscape Company, and determined that they had the resources, the equipment, the personnel, and the experience to do the kind of work that we require. This vendor does a lot of work in North Palm Beach and some other cities, and they also have about 48 HOAs that they do work for. The contract is for five years, then we'll have to go back out again. The projected cost over five years is $3.7 million, and these services are funded in the Public Services Department budget. Are there any questions?
Matthew?
Kumra, what were the criteria that you utilized to evaluate all of the potential vendors?
This was a bid, so it was whoever offered the lowest price. The law requires us to award to the vendor who is responsive and responsible and offers the lowest price. So the first determination is to determine the vendor's responsive to the bid. responsiveness goes to the nature of the bid. That is, what are we asking for? If we're asking for a blue horse, are you offering us a blue horse? And if you're not offering us a blue horse, then you're not responsive. Did you fill out all the forms? Did you sign all the affidavits? Did you sign the signature plate? Did you legally bind yourself to the bid? That is responsiveness. Responsibility goes toward-
Did they offer you a blue horse to work on the lawns?
Say it again?
Did they offer you a blue horse to-
No, because this is mowing. We specifically have some mowing. But I'm just using that as an example.
How about a blue goat, then?
Yeah, okay. Responsibility goes towards the nature of the bidder. And when I do the responsibility reviews, I look and see if the vendor is properly listed with Sunbiz, if the vendor has any kind of issues that we have used them in the past, did we have issues with them, I talk to the department. I also look at the scrutinized list that the state of Florida maintains that says you can't do business with certain companies because of Cuba, because of Israel, because of Sudan, because of all of that. We also look at the federal excluded parties listing to see if any of these vendors owe money to the federal government, the government says, don't do business with them. We also look and see if they have felonies. I look at Better Business Bureau, I look at Yelp, I look at all these things. So that goes towards responsibility. Are these, is this a vendor that we can legally do business with? And that's why this vendor was found non-responsive, non-responsive. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Well, I had also asked a question about that same, same, same issue, and completely understand that the requirements have to be filed and followed, and I'm comfortable with your response, so thank you.
Kumra, I just thought of something. Over the next five years, the demand may come up for more mowing or more landscaping or whatever. Does this contract absorb the extra effort that they may grow with the city and still get done, what we need them to get done?
The auto contracts like these, these requirements contracts allows us to add locations or additional services, they have to be related. So let's say for example, we buy an additional piece of land. The contract allows us to go to the vendor and ask for a quotation of that piece of land. However, the city is not bound to receive, to accept that, and that's in the bid. It says, if we don't think your pricing is reasonable, the city has the right to go to other vendors on the contract or other vendors outside of the contract. So if, so let's say, for example, Precision Landscaping, we ask them, give us a price on whatever, let's say we buy some other land, and the pricing we feel this is too high, this is unreasonable, we don't have to award to them. We can go back out and bid that out separately.
Kumra?
Answered, thank you.
Given that we have additional places that are going to have to be taken care of by them, and it's a longer contract, do you know offhand how much more per year we're-
No, because each, each property has a different size, a different requirement, depends on what kind of plants they have. This is specific to streets and parks. So if we bought another piece of land and turned it into a park, then this would fall under this contract. We have another contract that's specific to the PGA flyover and the canals that we mow, the long line mowing in the canals. And that also, if we, let's say we acquire a property and has a canal, it will fall under that contract. So it depends. It's just hard to predict the future and say, you know, the city's going to buy this and turn it into a park. It depends on the size, depends on what kind of vegetation, depends on all of that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Kumra.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion? I don't think we, we don't need a motion, do we?
I don't think we had a motion or a second. I think it was just a poll from the consent calendar to hear the item, but I think we need a motion to-
All right, may I have a motion and a second, please?
I move that we approve item F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Tonight, we, I hope you can all hear me. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 56, 2018, major conditional use to the Loxahatchee Slough public use facilities. Resolution 57, 2018, amendment to the PGA Commons PUD master plan. Ordinance 22, 2018, first reading Bonnet Hunt Club PUD site plan approval. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the recording of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Thank you. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 21, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Mr. Owens, how are you?
Well, Madam Mayor, thank you, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. And before you tonight is Ordinance 21, 2018. This is the first reading of the budget adoption ordinance, also the first public hearing for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget. Before we get into some of the details, just to get everybody caught up on where we are at in the budget process, July 12th, council set the maximum operating millage rate at 5.55 mils. The proposed line item budget was issued on July 16th. The Budget Oversight Committee finalized their report last week on August 30th. That report is out on the website as well as the line item budget. And then brings us up to tonight, which is the first public hearing. After this meeting, we have the second and final hearing scheduled for September 20th. So taking a look at some of the key initiatives, one of the things we do every couple of years is a resident survey, and the survey in 2017 was, again, very, very positive. It actually, the total satisfaction rating was a 4.3 out of 5.0. That's actually up a little bit from the previous survey. But again, there are a few items that staff is addressing in next year's proposed budget, and we'll hit some of the highlights of those, starting with the area of public safety. Obviously, that's a very important area for the, of concern for the residents, traffic and crime. So what we've provided for in next year's budget is funding for six additional police officers, primarily to address issues with growth, particularly in relation to annexations out west and all the additional development that's going on with the city. Another item that council is well familiar with is last month, August 6th, and a contract was, took effect to address the potential of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office that had been going out and trying to recruit officers, not just here in our city, but throughout the county. And we were looking at potential losing up to 14 officers, which is about 12% of our force. So as council knows, an agreement was reached with the union whereby we agreed to an additional 6% adjustment on top of the 6% that was already in the contract. So that 12% adjustment is also reflected in next year's budget. Moving on to some of the other items, as far as how residents prefer to pay for their services, again, plurality of residents prefer to pay for city services out of ad valorem taxes. So next year's budget, we continue not to levy a lot of the different fees that other cities do charge, such as utility tax on electric water, propane, natural gas, collection fees for residential curbside solid waste recycling, stormwater assessments, fire assessments, and we have not proposed any increase in the communication service tax rate, which is, remains at 3.25%. Moving on, we also have residents like the Quarterly Signature City Magazine, so we've continued funding for that. Parks and Recreation is always a very high priority of all of the residents. 91% agree that Parks and Recreation provide vital services to the community. So in next year's budget, we've provided funding for prorated operational costs for the new Gardens North County District Park that's being constructed right now. We've also provided funding for the ongoing maintenance, repair, and operations plan for existing parks and recreation facilities. We've also provided in the general fund, funding for some various capital projects. I won't go through and read all of them, you can see them spelled out before you, but again, we're allocating some additional money for some various capital improvements and equipment and fixtures for next year. Environmental stewardship is very important to the residents. Next year, we will continue, as we always do, staff's focus on planning development practices that encourage the preservation of green space. A good example was, is the Avenue Development that sets aside about half of that total parcel as conservation area, and also the work that we're doing as far as green space, recreation space at the North County District Park. Economic development is also important to residents. We continue to set aside a little over $2 million in next year's budget for economic development incentives. And taking a look at some of the numbers now, the total valuation for next year is about $11.5 billion. That includes the new construction total of $186 million. Existing properties in the city went up about 4.41%. So overall, the total valuation of the city is up about 6.1%. And this is the seventh year in a row that that total values have increased, going back since we started to get out of the big recession. As far as the proposed millage rate for next year, we are proposing to maintain the operating rate flat at 5.55 mils. The debt service millage rate is proposed to be reduced down to .0503 from .1178. That would give us total proposed rate next year of 5.6003, which is about a 1.2% reduction from the current year total rate to 5.6678. And the rollback rate calculates out to be 5.3154. And as you know, what that basically is, is a rate that would bring in the same amount of revenue as was brought in last year, excluding new construction, and that equates to about a 4.41% increase over the rollback rate as far as what our proposed operating rate is. Taking a look at the effect on three typical homesteaded properties with a taxable value after the exemption of $200, $300, and $400,000, you can see what they, those properties currently pay. Now, under Sabra Homes, you know the property goes, if it's homesteaded, it will go up by the CPI or 3%, whatever. the CPI or three percent, whatever's, whatever's less. In this case, it's capped at two point one percent. So if you apply that two point one percent increase on these properties, you can see that at the proposed rate, the annual increases range from sixteen dollars to twenty-six dollars. We'd like to point out, though, with the reduction in the debt service millage, those annual increases average about less than one point five percent. So even with the values rising, the overall, because we reduce the millage rate, the overall increase is less than the CPI for those properties. Now, if you take a look at some tip of three with the same values, non-homesteaded properties, again, you have to make some assumptions here. You know, how much is a non-homesteaded property going to go up? It's possible it could stay the same or could go down. But if you apply the same percentage across the board, that overall values in the city went up at four point four-one percent, then you do the math, you can see the annual increases come out to range from forty-nine to a hundred dollars. On a monthly basis, that's four dollars, six, or a little over eight dollars. While we're talking about the tax rate, I would like to address one thing, an article that came out a few weeks ago in the, in the local paper that talked about the city's proposed taxes for next year. I thought it was a little bit misleading, and I wanted to just touch on that briefly. If you look at the, the heading, the, on the first page of the paper, you can see, it says Gardens Residence Taxes Set To Increase. Then if you look in the actual local section, the heading, Proposal Accounts For Growth With Tax Increase. It's a little misleading and even would cause some confusion on members of our budget oversight committee. We met the very next day, by the way, on August twenty-third, and they're talking, sitting up there where you guys are, this isn't right, we're lowering the taxes, right? Yes, we are. But as I just showed you, because of the increase in the valuation, you know, the revenue generated can, will be more. But again, I thought it was a little bit misleading. I just wanted to clarify that because I think there's been some confusion about that. I also think it's even more confusing when you look at, you know, another city is doing exactly what we're proposing to do, that is maintain the operating rate flat, lowering the debt millage. But I'd like to show you what, you know, the heading was on their article. You know, West Palm might see a slight drop in taxes this year. And if you look in there, they even talk about how they're keeping their operating rate flat, but lowering the debt millage. It goes on to say that, and it is true, like I said, if the value of a home stays the same, we could say that too, that our taxes would drop a few dollars. In my case personally, I did the numbers, and my tax bill will go down fifteen dollars instead of up seventeen dollars. But we try to be open and transparent when we present these, these numbers to everybody. But I did think it was a little confusing, or could be confusing, to people reading these articles. As far as how much of our tax bill goes to the city, about seventy-one cents of the total dollar goes to all the other agencies like the county, the school district, other various taxing districts. So that leaves about twenty-nine cents of every dollar that, of taxes paid that come to the city. Taking a look at some of the numbers now, starting with all funds, revenues and other sources, about one hundred and fifty-eight point one million dollars. You can see the various categories of revenue. Ad valorem taxes consist of about sixty-one point eight million. And our projected total fund balance carried over for all funds is about forty million dollars. And that's balanced with our expenditures and uses, a little, about one hundred and fifty-eight point one million. You can see the various categories of expenditures, personnel. Obviously, we're a service-oriented agency, so that represents the largest part of the pie here. And our projected end-of-year reserves are about thirty-nine point three million. Moving on, drilling down to the general fund, the total revenues and sources about one hundred and eighteen point eight million next year. Again, you can see some of the various categories that make up that total, with ad valorem, again, being the biggest portion of that. And our projected carryover in the general fund is about twenty-seven point two million. That is bud, balanced with the expenditures and uses, about one hundred and eighteen point eight million. You can see, again, the personnel, operating capital, debt, and our projected ending, end-of-year reserves, about twenty-six point seven million dollars. So we look at balancing the budget for next year with the, looking on the expenditure side of the, the ledger, we're, and this is for the general fund, we're looking at an increase in salaries of about three million dollars. Retirement cost increased by about one point five million. Total health expenses, health, life, and other types of insurance, about one point five million. Other costs increased by about one point seven million. Now, to balance that on the revenue sources, we had about two point five million additional revenues in ad valorem taxes. We had about three million in other revenues to throw into there. We actually had a decrease in the amount of capital that was budgeted, about one point seven million. And to make up the difference, about five hundred thousand dollars being projected to come out of our budget stabilization reserve fund. So taking a look at some of the big drivers or significant factors in next year's budget, again, a lot of demands for the dollars that are available in the form of personnel cost, operating cost, and a lot of some other items, other factors. And most of these factors are related to, to growth-related issues, growth-related and other issues. And the growth is primarily annexations, new development, external development, new facilities that are being constructed internally, city facilities. And again, as we talked about, labor market factors that we had to, that we're facing for next year. Taking a look at some of those major categories, some of the significant factors behind those as far as personnel cost, which consists of salaries, FICA, retirement, health, life, workers' comp. The total is up about six million dollars. Half of that, three million is, or four, or half of that, four point eight percent is due to the PBA adjustments that we talked about and health claim cost increases. Retirement or pensions, we are funding the total amount, full amount that the actuary reports require us to fund. That total is about ten point two million. That's up about one point five million from the current year. Roughly one point three million of that total increase is due to police and fire pension increases. As the mayor mentioned, alluded to earlier this evening, the other part of that contribution goes to the Florida retirement system, which is mandated by the state legislature every year. And I can tell you that a lot of that contribution that goes there goes towards the unfunded liabilities of the state refund, the state retirement system, which is already one of the healthiest funds in, in America. As far as positions, we're looking at sixteen requested positions. That would put us at a total of five hundred and thirty full-time positions. If you take a look at the breakdown of these new positions, we have six new officers and one police service specialist. We have a fire division chief of training. And we have three maintenance positions related to the new facilities that are coming online. We also have three currently part-time positions that are requested to go to full-time. We have a landscape and development compliance officer. And we have a senior planner dedicated for western development. This position will be reimbursed by Avenir, so there's no net cost. We have a revenue item to balance that out. As far as the other items, as far as operating costs, we continue funding of our maintenance, repair, and operating plan, eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for various things such as roof repair, maintenance, painting, AC, bathroom, plumbing repairs. We have three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for parks-related items. We have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for roadway plant replacement, median tree trimming. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's allocated for the annual stormwater repair and maintenance program. We also have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. When that money comes in, that will be allocated to this program. That will give us our, what we try to do every year is allocate five hundred thousand dollars. So that will give us our five hundred thousand dollar allocation with those two items added together. We have the continuation of our canal maintenance program, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation for that program. Moving on to one of the other items mentioned, as far as the citizen survey, the other fees and charges, as I mentioned, there are several things other cities charge that we don't. The residential curbside garbage and trash, electric, you know, water and gas utility taxes that we don't charge. The city doesn't have any stormwater assessment or city fire assessments. And that's important when we compare the total cost for a typical homeowner in the city, when we add not just the ad valorem, but all these other fees and charges. So again, based on these assumptions, using a, a home valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, assessed at three hundred and fifty with a fifty thousand dollar homestead exemption, and you can see the other assumptions as far as electric, water, and annual cable TV and telephone charges, using these, these numbers as baseline assumptions, we come up with a, a comparison chart that shows the total cost of that resident estimated at six thousand one hundred dollars, Boca Raton at six thousand one forty-two. The next group here of four cities, I'd just like to highlight that, again, the city portion of their bill is, is very low because they have a very low city millage rate. But these, the other thing in common with these cities is that they are members of the fire rescue MSTU. So their other ad valorem is very high, especially in Royal Palm, Jupiter in Wellington, Juno in Wellington. And then you add the other fees and charges, you can see where the estimated total cost is for, for those cities. And then the other, down here, the North Palm Riviera and West Palm, you can see the estimated cost for those. So again, we think we're very competitive and actually, based on these assumptions, come out a little bit ahead on, on this comparison chart. Just taking a quick look at some of the other funds, we have several special revenue funds, which, those revenues are restricted either by, you know, in this case of gas tax, restricted by state statute as to what you can use it for. You can see that the projected revenues, nine hundred and forty. You can see the various allocations, continuing projects, annual projects, street sidewalks, street lighting, roadway striping. We also have a special revenue fund, the golf course fund. These revenues are committed through the budget adoption process. Those fees can only be used to pay to run the, that fund. So those revenues are restricted in that manner. We can't use those revenues and fees for, for any other purpose unless council passes some type of a budget amendment that would allow us to do that. But again, these are restricted, and you can see projected revenues and expenditures and projected reserve balance. To make up the difference between revenues and expenditures, we do, are budgeting a transfer from the general fund. If we don't need to make the full transfer, again, we won't make that. Another special revenue fund is our recreation special revenue fund. You can see projected revenues, expenses, and reserve balance. As with golf, we have budgeted in the general fund, a, a transfer that would offset any difference between the revenues and expenses. Moving on to other funds, we have two internal service funds, one being the self-insured health fund. You can see projected revenues, expenditures. You can see expenditures exceeding revenues. And I think, as council is aware, we have over the last twelve months or so seen that our medical claims have spiked high. We think it's an anomaly, and we actually, the last couple of months have seen claims moderate and come back down to what I would say a more normal level. But we work with our actuary to come up with a funding every year, and we were very fortunate to have a very healthy fund balance because we've had, over the years, since it started back in October of two thousand and eight, a very good experience as far as claims. So again, we were very lucky to have that, that balance to be able to mitigate the need to, to increase the charges for each department and, and thereby reducing the need for any kind of additional taxes that would have to be spent. And then the other internal service fund is the fleet maintenance fund. You can see the projected revenues and expenditures. One of the big initiatives in that fund is the citywide leasing program that we'll be undertaking. And there's, just to highlight some of the other funds, as far as capital projects, we have impact funds. You can see the total projected revenues for the, all of the impact funds and the expenditures. Debt service on the Burns Road, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand and six hundred and seventy-five thousand. You can see some four hundred and twenty-five from police impact fund for radio infrastructure and two hundred and fifty thousand from the public facilities impact fund for upgraded security reader system. And the next couple of slides are just to highlight some of the projects that have either been done or are currently in process, using impact funds, recreation impact fund. You can see the Russo Athletic Complex, the Golf Clubhouse. Road Impact, you can see the project currently in process, Johnson Dairy Road Improvements, Auto Police and Fire, Radio Monopole, and the Public Safety Training Complex at Richard Then we, moving on to the financial forecast, and this is an area we spend a lot of time on this year. Normally, we, we always prepare a five-year forecast. This year, with a lot of the things, future development in particular, out west and Avenir, city manager charged each department to go back and, and take a hard look at requirements, projected impacts from any personnel, operating capital for this, a ten-year period, to expand the horizon, to see if we're headed in the right direction. So with that in mind, we prepared a ten-year forecast. Some of the highlights of this forecast, we have proposed maintaining the operating rate flat, I'm sorry here, flat at five point five-five. We will reduce the debt millage to zero in fiscal year twenty twenty, when next year is the last payment on our general obligation debt. We have factored in the potential addition, additional twenty-five thousand dollar exemption that would be voted on in November of this, this year. It wouldn't take effect as far as our budget until fiscal year nineteen and twenty. During this ten-year period, we project that our unassigned reserves would be gradually reduced in twenty twenty-three to eighteen point seven million, but then would rebound by twenty twenty-eight, back up to almost twenty-three million. Budget stabilization reserves would be reduced, but then again, would rebound as new development comes onto the tax rolls by twenty twenty-eight. Now, the use and the level of reserves does comply with our, our policy. And I mean, what I mean is, the policy says at least seventeen percent. We don't go below that in, in any ten, of the year of the ten-year period. And as far as the use, use of the fund, the reserves would be for one-time items such as capital. So we're not using it in this ten-year projection to pay for operating. So to make it a little easier to, to, graphically to see how this works, on the red, red bars, you can see the budget stabilization, starting at seven hundred thousand, proposed next year, and then would go down to zero, but by fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, would rebound up actually to about seven point five million dollars. Then if you look at the unassigned reserves on the green bars, they start out at about twenty, two point seven million, go down to about eighteen point seven million in twenty twenty-three. Again, but as tax roll, the property goes onto the tax rolls, that would rebound and we do go back up to about twenty-two point seven million at the end of the ten-year period. And then the last item to show would be the total projected millage rate on the yellow line here. Again, based on project, proposed next year of five point six zero zero three, as the debt service is paid off, the rate would go down to five point five-five and stay there for the remainder of the ten-year period. The next item, I just wanted to highlight the, as I mentioned earlier, the Budget Oversight Review Board issued their report dated August thirtieth. And again, it is online for any member of the public to go and take a look at. I did highlight a couple of the things here. First of all, they have two charges. One is to review the one cent surtax money to make sure the city's in compliance with all the various enabling legislation. And they, the first item said that they, they found that the city has expended tax funds in accordance with statutes, county ordinance, city ordinance, and related resolutions. Then the second charge is to review and make recommendations or comments on the proposed budget. And one they note here is that effectively, the city council and city staff have proposed a budget that reduces the tax rate exposure to the city residents. Then the other, the last item I would mention is that the, noted that the city has taken steps to avoid a tax increase for fiscal year nineteen. Moreover, the ten-year forecast provided, provided an excellent snapshot of how the city intends to maintain the current millage rate by evaluating the impact of changes in law, the home state exemption, and demographics. And I would like to introduce, I know I saw Mark Feldmesser of CPA, the chair, earlier. I think he's there, okay. And we also have the vice chair, Dennis Barron, and we have Andrew Cometer. And I'm not sure if Mark Schulte is here. I don't see him. I know David Middleton said he was going to be out of town. So anyway, just a big thanks to them. It's always a pleasure working with them. If you have any questions of them, I'm sure they'd be happy to jump up and field those. But again, very pleased with working with them for the past year, look forward to working with them in future years. So in summary, the 1819 budget provides a plan to accomplish the following. Funding for additional employees to keep up with increasing demand for services. Funding for PBA, SEIU, and IAFF contracts. Adjustments for non-union employees. Provides 250,000 plus a 250,000 grant for the fourth year phase of stormwater repair renovations. 250,000 for the third year of canal maintenance. And does this while maintaining the operating rate flat at 5.55 while reducing the debt rate from .1178 to .0503. So as far as required action, staff would recommend a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a proposed millage rate of 5.6003 mils, which includes a debt millage of .0503 and an operating rate of 5.55 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 5.3154 by 4.41%. And then staff would further recommend a motion to approve ordinance 21, 2018 on first reading, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2018, 19. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure we have questions.
Who wants to go first?
First, I'd like to thank the city manager for his foresight in asking for a 10-year projection with everything that is coming up in the way of development and the home state exemption. Looking that far ahead really gives us a clear picture of where we should be and where we can go in our planning. Alan, as far as the budget stabilization fund, there are other properties and things in the city that if they come on board earlier or at all during this period of time, redevelopment areas and things like that, that could have a positive effect on our reserves going forward and we may not end up in a zero position. Is that a possibility?
I mean, that is always a possibility, Councilwoman Litt. I mean, one thing I want to stress is these are projections and they can and will change. We try to be, as you know, very conservative in our projections. So, you know, it could be more, yes. There could be projects. We try to our best to sit down with planning and zoning, go through all of the projects that are on the board, but that's not to say there might be something that just comes up that we, at the moment, don't really have planned out in our projections. So that is possible.
Councilmember Litt, Matthew Lane.
Yeah, Alan, I'm going to refer back, and we've already had this discussion, so I'm sure you're going to answer. First of all, I want to start by saying you did an excellent presentation. As always, you did a wonderful, wonderful job. I want to commend you on the way you run your department and the way you presented this. I also want to thank the Budget Review Board members. Mark and Dennis and Andrew, you all should know how difficult and how much work they put in. And we really appreciate all of your work and your efforts and the excellent product that you produced. So thank you so much. And there the fellows are sitting right there.
Alan, I'm going to refer back to the Palm Beach Post article because the Palm Beach Post reported that as a result of an increase in our property values, the city is going to be taking in and spending more revenue this year than last year. And overall, our citizens are going to have to pay more taxes this year than they paid last year. And I certainly don't want to raise the amount of taxes that our residents pay. So my question would be, why does it make sense for us to take in and spend more revenue this year than last year and to increase the amount of taxes that our residents pay?
Well, we have certain demands, Councilmember Lane, that, you know, as I went through in the presentation, we have obligations, contractual obligations that we have to be met. We have other things that as far as, you know, operational needs that have to be met. And the way I look at it is like we're, you know, we're investing now, you know, the old axiom, you have to invest money to make money. Well, that's coming down the road, but we have to prepare ourselves for, for that time when those things do come online, when that, and we already have annexations. And that's another point that I didn't make is that while we even have to provide services out there, one of the largest annexation that just took place, we will not see the revenue from that annexation until fiscal year 1920. So, you know, that, you know, we're providing services there now, but that revenue will be coming in the following year.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
Mark, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to follow up on Matt's comment because this is a common thing that you hear in the community. You're bringing in more money, you have all this extra growth, all this extra tax revenue, where does it go? And you kind of have to make some assumptions. I like to say that I'm not cheap, but I'm conservative. And I like to say that Kumra might be cheap and Alan is conservative. Essentially, you have to keep in mind that, you have to have some certain assumptions in place. Back in 2012, 13, 14, when I was on the Budget Review Board with, when we had four Marks and a Dennis, we were part of the process that was really watching how the city was responding to the budget crisis. And you have to make the assumption, and I did make the assumption and I will continue to make that assumption, that the city is very careful on its purchasing, on its expenses, and the departments didn't spend and waste money. And I think those practices are carrying forward. In a $118 million budget, are you going to find waste? I'm sure you can. Is it worth the time and the energy to try to find it? Maybe, maybe not. But all in all, you have to make certain assumptions when you look at a budget at this size. And I'm making the assumption that the city has done a good job watching its expenses and watching its dollars. So then you kind of go back to, you know, where are we going? And in last year, I asked for, in my preliminary discussions with the city manager and finance director, to see if we could consider a small token millage reduction. And I'm kind of glad we didn't because if we did, we would have less dollars in reserve. We didn't see a hurricane coming. We didn't see the need to provide additional funding for police and fire, secure police. There was a comment on social media that suggested that, you know, having all the officers sitting in the room might have made us feel uncomfortable with that. But as a business owner, I would also like to state that when you have good staff, you want to make sure they remain. It's one thing if one or two people may want to leave for a better job somewhere else, but when 10 or 12% of your workforce is planning on leaving, especially in a service that is critical to the residents, you really want to be cautious in how you want to handle that. So certainly, we were asked to fund additional dollars to the police department, and I thought it was the right thing to do. So when you just look at where the expenses are going, what we're spending the money on, and what our projections are, I think it's a fair budget and I think it was done the right way. So I'm going to support this budget. I'm going to support the presentation of the budget. I'm going to support the staff and Kumra and all the work he does in helping us understand the purchasing. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how we can move forward as the years progress. But stability is important and not being rash is also very important, too. And when I ask my friends, my neighbors, my colleagues, people that live in all parts of the city, and I say, "How do you feel about your taxes?", they say, "Well, it went up 26 bucks." And I say, "Well, it's still $26. You don't spend it for no reason." But all in all, people want the services that we're providing. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Carl?
I think Mark kind of covered it all for me. Excellent presentation, I appreciate. And I really liked the 10-year vision because I think a five-year vision with a city this size, with the direction we're going, with the capital improvement projects, with the parks, the avenue, you name it, it gives a better, it almost stabilizes it. But, you know, five years, still a little bit of a guessing game, but stretching it out 10 kind of stabilizes the vision for long-term. I was kind of wondering, we're going into the peak of hurricane season, and I don't think we've been reimbursed the money that we spent, which, how much was that last year?
Last year, last year, the total's about 1.4 million, if I recall, yeah.
In the event this continues, how is that going to affect year-to-year operating bases? Are we going to be able to absorb, say, this year and stabilize from that? Our forecast in emergency funding is not going to affect?
We'll have a better idea, Councilman, after we close out this fiscal year, which we're in the last month of where we stand financially. But even if our projections were right on target, you know, we still have a very healthy unassigned reserve. I mean, that is basically what that's for. But, you know, we'll see how we come out at the end of the fiscal year. There may be some, some good news.
Is the federal government getting any better at paying the cities back quicker?
No.
Or is it five years?
No, they're not getting any better. They had a new system that?
Based on what I'm watching on TV, they can't figure anything out, so.
They came out with a new method this year, supposed to be all, you know, rosy, and next thing you know, that's, it's a year later and we're still, you know, dealing with it. So, no, to answer your question, they're still the same.
Well, it was excellent, and Mark covered everything that I was going to say, so I didn't need to, I didn't need to be redundant. But I really appreciate the work that everybody's put into this and watching this now, you know, this might be my third budget that I've been involved in. It's just, I understand it more and more all the time. It might take me another three years and then bye-bye to understand it. But thank you for all the effort you do every day to keep this going forward. Thanks.
Alan and Budget Oversight Committee, thank you very much for a wonderful job. I have to say that, and you heard me say this last year, I read all the rest of the city's budgets and the county budget, and they are very difficult to read. Ours is very simple to read. And I did have 40 some odd questions or so, which I would like to thank you for answering most of those questions in your presentation and taking the time. We, my concern, and you addressed it in the 10-year plan, my concern is the depletion, depletion, sorry, the depletion of reserves over the next coming years. And as you said, it is just a projection. So I really don't want to see, I know we all wanted a tax decrease, which is obvious that it's impossible to do. And with just the normal cost of living and the cost of things going up every single year, and, you know, it's costing, costing more for police and fire than it did last year, and, you know, with retaining 10% of our police force, which we were almost, we were faced to maybe have leave us, you've done a great job in this and like everybody else. Wonderful job. Thank you very much. The city is in very, very good hands. I would like to remind people out there that our Alan and Ron and the rest of us, we're not just spending your dollars, we're spending our own dollars also, as we are all residents of the city, and we do want to see what's best for our residents. So I thank you very much. And I did go a little out of order. I was supposed to get a motion in a second to approve and then discussion, so may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
Two motions that will need to be made, so it's on your screen. Just, you go to the required action, you want to do the first motion.
I'll make a motion that the city adopt a proposed millage rate of 5.6003, which includes a debt millage rate of .0503 and operating rate of 5.55, which is greater than the rollback rate of 5.341, 4 by 4.1.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. May I have someone read the next one? Or may I have a motion for the next one, please? Go ahead, Rochelle. You're on a roll.
I recommend a motion to approve ordinance 21, 2018, as presented on first reading, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Both motions carry. Thank you very much. Resolution 56, 2018. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 56, 2018, a resolution of the city council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a major conditional use to allow various improvements for recreation facilities and a small public parking lot within a portion of the Loch Sahatchi Slough Recreation Facility area, located approximately one mile north of the PGA Boulevard and Beeline Highway intersection, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
I will open the hearing. And may I ask, were there any ex parte conversations?
I just drove through the property, just, I drove out to the property to see it, but that's it.
Hearing none. Do I have a presentation from the petitioner?
Madam Mayor, we do have one member missing, so I just want to make sure he has opportunity if there's any ex party when he does return.
I will ask again. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Frank Griffiths, and I'm with Palm Beach County Environmental Resources Management. And I'm pleased today to present to you a public use facility that we have planned to build within the city. Palm Beach County manages about over 30,000 acres and over 30 preserves. This is by far our largest preserve. It's almost 13,000 acres. The red there outlines it PGA Boulevard, and we put on there some of the local landmarks, North County Airport, your future avenue that you talked about, Beeline Highway, PGA Boulevard. So it basically extends from Palm Beach Country Estates all the way over to the Beeline Highway, from Jupiter Farm south, and goes all the way down to North Lake Boulevard. There's quite a few wild plants and animals on the site, including 57 listed species, which are considered rare, endangered, and that sort. There's 10 parcels, the largest of which was acquired in 1996 from the MacArthur Foundation, and over the next 10 or 12 years, we acquired more of them. We've spent over 10 years restoring the property, and it's very valuable for wildlife, water resources, well field, historic resources, and it also produces open space for the city and stops some urban sprawl. Just wanted to give you a quick little background. I won't go through all these numbers for you. I think your left brain's probably already hurting from the last presentation, the left side, so we'll just cover, a lot of the work we did on this was restoring it. It was all drained. We backfilled a lot of the ditches. We've done a lot of removal of exotic invasive vegetation. We replaced large culverts. Originally, it was just draining. We're trying to hold the water on the property longer. We got many funding partners. We've done over $12 million worth of work on the property, and almost 10 million of it was from using grants. Pictures of some of the areas, it was some of the most Malaluka-infested area in the county. We came in and removed a lot of that Malaluka. This is some of the other invasive species, kind of before and after treatment. A series of three slides to show to bring the marsh back from what was filled with some invasive plants. Another large, the first picture shows you a large Malaluka stand, which was historically an open water marsh. Oh, we did it to benefit many of the wildlife that you found in Palm Beach County. I think a lot of people that live in gardens would be surprised, the number of deer, bobcats, numerous animals out in that area. There currently is some public use access on it. That yellow trail that goes through there is the Ocean Lake Trail. People hike that from Lake Okochobee and get all the way to the Atlantic Ocean, passing through this property. Florida Trail Association maintains that. We work with them. Whoops, wrong direction. This is another picture of an aerial that shows what we plan to build on this property. It's really primitive. We're kind of looking for passive recreation uses, giving people opportunities to enjoy the wildlife, kind of like a smaller national or state park. We have a parking area that'll have about 25 parking lot, parking spaces and a bus parking area. About a 1,400-foot sidewalk trail. It complies with the American Disabilities Act. There'll be an observation? There'll be an observation platform at the end of that. We do have two old shell pits in the area. They'll provide some fishing opportunities for people. There'll be a fishing pier built there. And then a larger, that green spot up the top is kind of a destination thing for people to go up and see from a observation tower, to see from distances and look at the, kind of an aerial of the place. And we also situated it right near that Ocean Lake Trail that I talked about earlier. Kind of examples of some of the features we put in there. We'll also have a composting toilet out there, an educational kiosk. That's a picture of one of the observation platforms. An example of a fishing pier. It's got cutouts for wheelchairs and for children to use. That's the proposed location of the fishing pier. That's the proposed location. We did a burn right before that picture was taken, so we, we tried to do a prescribed burn out there, keep it low. Good opportunity. We see quite a few deer out there, turkeys, wild turkeys, things like that. The parking lot, if many of you are maybe longtime Gardens residents or from this area, this is the old shooting range it's referred to. There used to be a, a shooting range out there. And actually, if anybody knows some history on that, I'd love to hear a little bit of background. We see it on the old pictures, and people have talked about it. But it was already paved, and, and that's the area that we're going to put the, the proposed parking lot. The parking lot, as I talked about, about 25 spaces, a, a bus parking area. It'll be a loop. There is room for expansion onto the other side, if we, if we need to. We do expect to have quite a bit of use out here, not probably as much as your active parks are, but there is a lot of people that are into photography, wildlife viewing, and, and just getting out and fishing and enjoying nature. So we're excited to complete the project for the benefit of the public and community improvement. Grand dollars have been leveraged, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity here today.
Thank you, Frank. And I forgot to ask, had you been sworn in?
Yes, at the beginning.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does staff have anything to add?
At this point, no. Staff appreciates the applicant's presentation. Staff recommends approval, which includes all of the exhibits. And just for the record, there was some discussion during the agenda briefings on the issue of the solar lights, and the applicant has indicated that they are going to be providing, as presented in the petitioner's presentation. So thank you for that, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Thank you. I have no cards on this, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution 56, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure that-
Oh, Carl, did you have an ex parte at all on this? Okay. We're all over the place tonight. Okay, so now, we have now brought it back? Okay. Discussion, any questions or comments? No?
I think it's wonderful. I'm really excited to see it, so thank you for doing it.
I'm glad the lights were included. Thank you. All right, so may, I'll take a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution 57... I keep losing people. Okay, well, we'll have to ask for ex partes when she comes back. Resolution 57, 2018. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 57, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the PGA Commons Plan Unit Development, PUD Master Plan, to allow a new outdoor bar for Spoto's Restaurant located on the south side of PGA Boulevard, 0.25 miles west of North Military Trail, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Hello there.
Hi. Good evening. For the record, my name is Anne Booth. I'm with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, 610 Clemata Street in West Palm, and I have been sworn in.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm here tonight representing PGA Commons, asking for an amendment to the PUD to allow an outdoor bar at the Spoto's Restaurant. The bar is proposed in the area where there is existing outdoor seating. We are not proposing to increase the number of seats. It would be an, a modification and adjustment of the seats that are there. We will be expanding the awning to cover the bar and to cover a few more of the outdoor seats that are there from the wind and the rain and the sun. And everything that we're proposing right now is within the boundaries of the pavement area. We aren't impacting the landscaping, the signage, the art, or asking for any, any waivers at this point. The location of the bar is centrally located in the larger long portion of Commons Parcel III. The red star indicates where the restaurant is now. The yellow stars indicate where other bars are existing and have been approved. This proposed bar is consistent with the approvals that have been granted for the other bars. It is a standalone building, and it has its own space. As I mentioned before, it's consistent with the previous approvals. The existing outdoor space already has an extensive landscape buffer and screening that's already provided, so there isn't any additional landscaping that's being proposed at this time. As mentioned, the bar will fit within the alcove of the building, and there will be a maximum of 90 seats. There will be a permanent fire pit that is proposed in, in the nook of the pavement area, the existing pavement area. Those seats will also count towards the 90 seats that are allowed for the restaurant outside. This is an elevation of the proposed bar. There will be blue fish scale tiles that are proposed with a quartz top on the bar, all-new furniture, tables and chairs, and all-new umbrellas that will match the new awning that will go over the bar. At night, there are aluminum awnings that drop down and lock into place. We've worked with the police department in terms of their recommendations on locking mechanisms for these awnings, and this will protect the interior of the bar, all of the equipment and the materials at the bar. There are a number of details that are being added that are going to upgrade and update everything that you see out there now. Right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge of colors and materials and, and furniture and whatever, and it'll bring all of that into sort of a cohesive package of design. Staff and the Planning, Zoning and Appeals Board have recommended approval. The architect, Nathan Alice Kofsky, should be here.
Thank you.
Ralph Beneffante, who is the new owner of Spoto's. And I believe that Joel was coming, but apparently he has not made it yet. So if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Before we do that, since Rochelle had left, were there any ex partes?
No ex parte.
I have an ex parte. I spoke to Ken before.
Okay, none?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additions for the staff to present?
No additional staff presentation. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 57, 2018.
All right, I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
Sure. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 57, 2018.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. Any discussion?
I have a question. And the fire pit, is that propane? Or is there a gas line there that the fire pit goes into?
There will be a gas line, so you won't have that temporary propane situation, propane tank situation. But there's also an emergency cutoff valve, and the staff will be trained where those are and how to operate them, and then they'll be, it's all based on the fire department's requirements for operating a permanent fire pit.
There's already a gas line in the restaurant, I assume?
Yes, yes.
I am excited. Can't wait for everything to be back up and, and running again.
Thank you.
Matthew, any questions?
Sure. Love the restaurant. Great food. Not that this is a make-or-break question, but, but we still get to see Steve Mathis and play at Spoto's.
He indicated that he wanted a condition of approval that required that he play there every weekend, but I don't think staff was supporting that.
Thank you.
Mark, any questions?
Will there be shelter for the musical entertainment?
That's true. That's true.
No questions, thank you. Carl?
What's the structural stability on the aluminum things that you're going to put up every night? Are those hurricane-proof or?
Oh, the shutters that drop down-
Yeah. Are the shutters just there from the awning? They drop down, lock into place, and?
The way they're structured or proposed and designed is that they are, their default is in the up position. So there's a spring-loaded spring that, when you pull them down, then they lock into place. They're aluminum, and I believe they are wind-rated? Correct. If you want the architect to answer that more specifically, then I can have him come up.
Natalie, can?
All of the structures will have to be submitted through a building permit, and so the applicant will need to demonstrate that all proposed structures meet the, the Florida Building Code. And it is our understanding that those aluminum shutters that do lock do meet that. The awnings, however, a standard condition of approval that is included with all of our awnings will have to be, the canvas awning portion of the proposed awnings will have to be removed within the three-day cone of probability.
Yeah, that was just my thought. Do you just leave them up and then just clear the patio? Or is it something that stays down and helps secure the building? That was my only thought on that.
The awnings you're talking about during a hurricane?
Yes.
I would suspect that they will be down during a hurricane, but that's... Yes, no? The-
Yeah, but they're going from 10 feet to zero. Could be blown all over PGA.
This is typical when we deal with patio furniture, awnings. We have our standard conditions of approval. Anything structural needs to be either tied down, secure. They have to demonstrate through the Florida Building Code, through our building department, that, that they meet the code. And if not, the, the portion, the canvas awning portion is typically removed within, within the three-day cone. So we, we deal a lot with this. And then as a proactive measure, our Development Compliance Division does make direct phone calls when that three-day cone hits to ensure that the, the property owner does comply. And as a matter of historical compliance, this, this property owner has, has done that.
But I think we're, Carl, you're not talking about the awnings. You're talking about the roll downs, correct? The awnings and the roll downs are two different things.
Sure. So you, you have the roll downs, you have the actual structural part of the awnings, and then you have the canvas awning portion itself. And, and all of that, I believe, that I addressed.
Yes, you did. It's just, it was just a thought of mine not to go on, but when you button up during a hurricane, what part is hurricane-proof? And, or do you just leave it all up and, you know, security thing? But you've answered it, Natalie. Everybody has. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any, any more questions? Okay. I think we're good. May I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 20, 2018. May I have, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 20, 2018, in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, annexing pursuant to a petition for voluntary annexation a parcel of real property comprising a total of 5.74 acres, more or less, located on the southeast corner of US Highway 1 and Juno Road, approximately 0.5 miles north of the intersection of PGA Boulevard and US Highway 1 in Palm Beach County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation petition bears the signature of the owner of the real property annexed hereby, amending Article II of the city charter by redefining the corporate limits, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, the Florida Governor's Office, and Palm Beach County, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I'll open the hearing. Anne, hi.
Hi. My name is Anne Booth. I'm with Urban Design Kill Day Studios and 610 Clemata Street in West Palm Beach, and I have been sworn in. I'm here tonight, unfortunately, Carl, Ken apologizes, he had to go out of town, so I'm here tonight to represent the property owner in this annexation request. This is a voluntary annexation. The property owner is fairly new to the ownership of the property, and they're very excited to become part of the City of Palm Beach Gardens. The property owner is Bob Sullivan, who is the president of our JS Partners, and he is here in the audience if you have any questions. The property is located on the east side of US 1, just north of Golden Bear Plaza, and it consists of approximately 5.735 acres. It's an existing shopping center. I'm sure you've seen it. It has been vacant for quite a while. There are several things that have to be done to satisfy voluntary annexation requirements, and the Florida statutes identify that the property has to be contiguous to a municipality that it would be annexed into, and it has to be reasonably compact. The property is adjacent to and just north of the municipal boundary of the city, which is the Golden Bear Plaza and a couple of small out parcels. The second thing that has to be satisfied is that the petitioners and the property owners all have to agree to the voluntary annexation. In this case, we only have one property owner, and he has requested the, the annexation, so we have satisfied that requirement. There's also notification and advertising requirements. The property has been posted with signs following this ordinance, or this reading tonight. There will be public notices posted in the newspaper and notices sent out to the surrounding property owners. The county has a charter which has provisions in it for voluntary annexation. We have satisfied those conditions. The county has also been notified of the annexation, and there have been no objections. The city also has an annexation study that they have done, and this site is part of the area that is part of the future annexation area, Area 6, and it is part of the future annexation area map in the comprehensive plan. What happens next? Once the property is annexed into the city, it will come in with county zoning and land use designations. There will be city-initiated applications, which are already in process, for the rezoning of the property and a designation of a future land use plan designation. The current designations are, for all intents and purposes, commercial, and they would go to commercial, but designated in the city under the designations that the city has for commercial property. The property owner is very excited, as I mentioned, about coming into the city. They would like to begin marketing the project to commercial tenants, doing renovations to the interior, some minor upgrades to the facade, update and replace the landscaping, and then reopen the site for business as soon as possible. If there are any future modifications, they would obviously, major modifications will have to come back to you for approval and approval of a site plan. As I mentioned, the property owner is here. If you have any questions, we have been recommended for approval by PZAB and the staff. I believe staff is prepared with the presentation. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Natalie, you have anything to add?
Just very brief, we would like to just highlight the levels of service as part of the annexation. Thank you.
For the record, Martin Fitz, Planning and Zoning. We, as part of the annexation process, we did a level of service analysis to make sure that annexing the property would not negatively impact the level of service that the city provides to all of the residents. This property meets, meets the level of service standards for all of the services that we provide. Specifically, it already has potable water and sanitary sewer provided to the property. The drainage is, it meets capacity. The, also, police will not have to add any additional personnel or equipment in order to service the area because it's already within one of the service areas that the, one of the patrol areas that the police already has. And as far as fire service, they, the Palm Beach County Fire Department is within one mile, and they would continue to be the first responders, and that wouldn't change after the annexation. So there will be no change and no negative impact on the level of service for the, for following the annexation.
Thank you. All right, I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20, 2018.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. Questions?
I have some questions.
Go right ahead.
This piece of property's been empty for quite a long time, as you mentioned as well. City has quite a few, not too many, but quite a few properties that are still empty at this point. I was just wondering what other projects Mr. Solomon and, and the owner has that would be comparable, that are nearby, that- that would be comparable, that are nearby, that, uh, at this point?
If you would introduce yourself, that'd be great.
My name is Bob Sullivan.
Nice to meet you.
With, uh, RJ's Partners. I haven't been sworn in, so...
Yes. He's not.
Oop, I'm sorry. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Other properties we own just in that corridor, we purchased the, uh, building where, uh, the Valley National Bank is and, uh, um, Melting Pot Restaurant. Uh, we bought that in '09. We've done work to, to clean up that property a bit, didn't do a lot to that. We bought a property just to the north at the entrance to Captain's Cay, uh, which is a 4,500 square foot, uh, center where Three Natives is and a couple of other tenants. That's only 4,500 feet. Um, I'm a director and partner with Southeast Centers, which is a 35-year-old, uh, property management and development company. Uh, we manage, uh, we used to own an interest in about 40 shopping centers, all Publix-anchored centers. Uh, that portfolio was sold to, uh, Prudential, around 100% of those. Those centers were sold to, uh, Prudential Insurance Company a number of years ago. We retained an interest in those properties. And, uh, and then today, most of those interests have been sold, sold off to Prudential. So Prudential owns 100% of those assets. But we manage, uh, 40 properties. I think about 36 of those are the Publix-anchored centers throughout the state of Florida. So we did, we, those were developed from the ground up and, uh, you know, there's still ongoing development being done on those as it relates to out parcels or, you know, reconfiguration. And so Southeast Centers is doing the, uh, gonna be doing the leasing and the construction management on the property.
Do you have any tenants that are currently interested in going in there at this point? An idea of, of what that's gonna be when you're done?
You know, we don't have, uh, well, so we've got a number of tenants that we're talking to. You know, the property's got, uh, the components of the property at 74,000 feet. And so the north end of the property is a two-story, 34,000 square foot building that used to be the location for Carl's Furniture. And then the middle, at the corner, in the elbow, there's a two-story building that's about, uh, 18,000 square feet. And, uh, that used to be Carl's patio on the first floor and offices above. So we have, uh, uh, we've got three prospects that we're talking to about the north end building. And then we've got, uh, I don't know, probably... And again, that's 45% of the center. And then the rest of the center, we're talking to people about the front and cap toward US 1. Uh, and, uh, so we haven't, we don't have any signed leases yet. We just acquired the property at, uh, last part of April. And so we wanna get through the, uh, annexation process, we're really excited about that. Uh, I live in West Palm Beach today, but used to live at PGA National for 18 years, and I love Palm Beach Gardens, so that was one of the first things we wanted to do when we acquired the property. And it's been sitting there vacant, as you said, for about four years, and it's been kind of a blight, you know, the lights have been off and everything. So we're looking forward to rejuvenating it.
I agree with you on that, okay. Thank you. Matthew?
Thank you, welcome to the city, hope to provide excellent services. I've got two questions. First step, how will the annexation of this property affect our tax base in light of the services that, uh, we'll have to provide to the property? And second of all, why is it beneficial to the city to annex this property now?
I can answer one of those questions.
Mayor, would you like to?
$32,000. Because if you, if you go by, if you compare other properties, um, I pulled up several other properties within the city and applied the 5.55 to the portion of it that gets paid to our city. Of their $5.8 million that they're paying right now in taxes, it'll be $32,000, plus or minus. So that will be the additional, the additional tax revenue that the city will...
That was my next question.
...will, uh, earn. And the level, and what will the services cost?
And, and the services, as Mr. Fitz explained, are absorbed with the existing staff, so that there's no anticipated expenditures. And really, on the conservative side, we're looking at evaluation. As the mayor, uh, um, explained and, um, uh, described very accurately, it's, uh, it's $32,000 projection, uh, annually, and over time...
Unimproved.
Un-improved. Over time, certainly that value may increase as redevelopment opportunities increase on the site. What is the benefit in, in having the parcel be in, in the city of Palm Beach Gardens? Uh, well, I think there's certainly, um, a lot of benefits to, to be, to talk about. I, I think the first thing to highlight is the, the whole intent of annexation and why annexation i- is really advocated. If you look at state law, uh, it's to provide contiguous, compact services, so the public gets the best services. When you have jagged boundaries, when you have these little pockets, it provides inefficient services. So ultimately, it's the public who benefits, life safety, first responders. The more fluid your jurisdictional boundaries can be, the better. So that's, that's number one. In terms of the city, uh, the, the, the whole process of, of going through building permits, through planning, um, it's, it's, it's a whole different, uh, process, really, when you, when you look at the city's process and how efficient we are. And I think you saw the accolades through, uh, this evening with our building department. And they're just second to none. And if you talk about, and if you talk to people and you explain to them, you know, in going through our process versus the county, yeah, you can't even compare. So I, I think that's a mutually beneficial, um, uh, item to highlight. I think that the fact that the, whatever is ultimately developed gives the city control and the ability to require our standards, our parkway standards, our landscape standards, our codes, our very strong codes. Our architectural codes are stronger than the county's, and you will get a ultimately, uh, uh, a development that is within the gardens' character on that site. So for those reasons and for the fact that it's a financially positive aspect, this, uh, this annexation makes a lot of sense.
Super, thanks Natalie, thank you Mayor. And I'm really happy we have such a substantial, uh, person and company coming into our business community and look forward to helping you in any way we can.
Mark, any questions, comments?
Quick question, well, a couple of questions. So the company that is currently owning the property, that, that building has been empty for a long time. What's the, what's the status of the interior? And, and the company essentially is prepared and has experience in internal, external renovations of commercial properties, I would assume?
Yes, the whole interior of the building will need to be renovated. It's been vacant for quite a while.
Yeah.
And, uh, that is something that they are familiar with, that they would be able to do themselves.
And they have experience in doing that. And secondly, the reason I'm actually excited about seeing this coming into the city is if you just go north and west very, very slightly, and you look at a, a previous, um, commercial property that has been renovated, and you hear a lot of talk about the renovation, the reuse of commercial properties. I mean, I guess we can have a discussion and a debate about what the future of retail is going to be and whether or not a property like that would handle retail. The company obviously feels pretty strong about that. But I think more importantly for us, we saw in the paper, we saw the discussion and ultimately the change in, uh, the usage of a commercial property just to the north and west of it, that is now going to be, uh, residential. And I think it would be wise that if the city were a part of those conversations, instead of allowing the county to be that, the decider of what goes there. So in that respect, I, I'm more comfortable about us owning or annexing that property.
Thank you. Carl?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, you've done a great job. Okay, so, any more discussion? I asked? Oh, actually, I did not, because on my sheet here, it did not say quasi.
It is not quasi.
So we don't need ex parte?
No ma'am.
Thank you very much. So, um, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ordinance 22, 2018. May I have the clerk read the title, and this is quasi-judicial, correct?
Yes, it is ma'am.
Thank you.
Ordinance 22, 2018. In ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of real property totaling 6.78 acres in size, more or less, and located on the south side of Hood Road between Florida's Turnpike and Jog Road, to be known as the Bonnet Hunt Club Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing that these parcels of real property, as more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of Residential Lo 3, RL 3, providing that the zoning map of the city of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you, I will open the hearing, and any expartes? No?
I drove through the property the other day, just to view it personally.
Thank you. Hello there, have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have. My name is Nicole Plunkett, and I have been sworn in. I'm with Cotler and Hearing, and we're representing the Bonnet Hunt Club. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us tonight. Uh, we do have our entire team here. Our applicant is Parkwood Distinctive Homes. And, um, we do have our architect here, our landscape architects, um, Cotler and Hearing. Uh, our civil engineer, Todd McLeod, is here. And, um, traffic was also, um, looked at and, as this request as well. Tonight, we're requesting an approval to rezone from the PDA to PUD overlay with an underlying zoning of RL 3. We're also requesting an approval of a site plan for a 24-unit, single-family residential subdivision. The location of the property is located on Hood Road, just to the south. It's fully encompassed by the Marabella at Marisol Community on three sides. And just to the north of it is the East Point, East Point Country Club. The project site itself is approximately 6.78 acres. Looking in a little bit closer to the site. The project itself, um, in the past, it was, uh, the Bonnet Hunt Club, where it does have, um, a lot of history within the Palm Beach Gardens when it came to a larger parcel, where it was initially connected with, uh, the Marisol Community. And throughout the years, um, that has since passed. Uh, most recently, it was used as a banquet hall, uh, which has now ceased as well. That banquet hall is still on the site. But however, today, when you look at the current conditions, it's overgrown, it hasn't been maintained. There are, um, nine mobile homes on the site and three single-family homes. And as I said, it, it, the site has not been maintained. It does have a lot of exotic vegetation, and, um, it's just something that we're looking, uh, forward to cleaning up and proposing this plan with you. The residents, uh, within these mobile homes and single-family homes have been informed of the project. We wanted them to be aware of it. We've also worked with the Marisol Maintenance, um, Master Association. We set up a meeting with them approximately three months ago, earlier in the summer, and, uh, we met with, uh, Marcia Adler and her team. And we just wanted to provide the initial connection, the initial communication to them, because they're gonna be, uh, important when we're going through the design process, the construction process, and just keeping them well-informed. Basically letting them know that they have an open line of communication if they have any questions at all within anything. So I wanna pull up that there is an existing 25-foot PCD, PCD buffer that runs, uh, between the Bonnet Hunt Club property and the Marabella property on the west, the south, and the east sides. Now, that PCD buffer currently has an existing berm, and it also has a six-foot concrete wall, along with an approved landscape plan, uh, that goes along with it. We did do a tree survey to see if there were any significant trees on the site that we could save and preserve. And, uh, there are a handful of trees that we're going to preserve within the buffers. And something really cool that came out of our tree survey is that there is a quite significantly large banyan tree. You'll see, um, in the top-left corner of the project, the northwest corner, it's a 192-inch, uh, diameter banyan tree, which you do some quick math, it ends up being about 16 feet. And, um, we learned through the planning and zoning hearing from staff that, um, I think it is the largest banyan tree in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, which is kind of cool. So you have this big, significant, uh, banyan tree on the site, and we're looking to really clean it up, make it presentable, and make it a part of our beautiful 90, 90-foot parkway buffer along the, the Hood Road portion of the site. Taking a look at the proposed site plan. We are proposing 24-unit, single-family homes. The homes are gonna be two-story, ranging from 2,100 to 2,400 square feet. They're also gonna have an option of three to four bedrooms with a 26-foot height maximum. Now, density was something that we worked on with staff. Right now, the site, we're, uh, able to go to four dwelling units per acre, which puts us at 27 lots. Our very first submittal that we made, uh, to staff, almost about a year ago, was 27 lots. And density was, uh, one of the big items, along with many other items that, um, based on comment responses and, um, ideas from staff, we were able to modify our plan to bring it down to 24, um, units. And what that does for our site, it's such a unique, tiny, pocket, infill site that's constrained on so many sides, that we wanted to provide a community that not only made sense, but also gave the opportunity for residents to have recreational and open space opportunities. So providing the less, um, the lesser of the amount of lots, 24, and providing slightly smaller lots allows us to do that. The lots themselves are 40-foot by 110 feet. Setbacks was something that was really important to us. We're actually asking for a waiver, you'll see later on in the presentation, one of our waivers is to, uh, pull back our front lot setback by five feet. So what that does is it takes the 25-foot required front setback for the homes, and it pulls them up to 20 feet, pulls them even closer to the street to engage the street, to provide more opportunities for residents in their rear yards with pools, and also to pull the homes further away from those Marabella residents as well. Accessibility was an important part of our project. Uh, you'll see that we have the ingress and egress through Hood Road. And we also, um, have full pedestrian connectivity, not only throughout the site, but also connecting to, uh, a 12-foot wide parkway meandering sidewalk that runs through our parkway easement. We've worked with, uh, the police department and the fire department to provide the proper stabilized fire access that you'll see, um, in my presentation with the red arrow on the east side of the site. And with the police department, we made sure that this project is fully secured, uh, not only with the fencing around the entire, uh, community, which still has access for maintenance, but also it's gated. It's an unmanned, uh, gate system up front, uh, the front entrance, where we provide the proper setbacks for stacking distances and safety. But also, we provide, um, an additional barrier with the gates. So it's not only a swinging gate, but it's also an arm gate to prevent tailgating. And right here, highlighted up front, is the 90-foot parkway buffer. As I mentioned, we're gonna be putting in a meandering sidewalk. I'm sure, uh, Councilmember Marciano saw when he drove past it recently. There's a sidewalk that runs along Hood Road, but it's very straight. It's, it's, it's something that needs replacement. And if you look on the adjacent properties to the east and west, they have a meandering sidewalk. So we wanna provide that consistency within the parkway buffer, um, on our site to make it look like when someone's driving past, that it's a consistent parkway buffer from property to property. And lastly, on our site plan here, we have, uh, two monument signs that we're proposing. We're proposing the Bonnet Hunt Club, uh, name, which is almost a nod to the historical aspect of it. But, um, but we are proposing two monument signs, which I'll show you what they look like later on in the presentation. When I talk about recreation and open space, uh, we are providing many recreational opportunities, both passive and active. We have a pocket park highlighted up in the northwest corner. We also have a pavilion and a trellis right adjacent to the lake, which provides many recreational opportunities. We have a tot lot, and we also have, um, fitness stations, and everything is connected, uh, through pedestrian access. We also have additional parking, uh, for guests and visitors as well for the uses. We are not only meeting the recreation and, uh, open space requirements, but we're also above and beyond those as well. Taking a look at, uh, some of the details of the site, the gazebos, the male kiosks, pavilions, everything is consistent with the architecture. Not only is it consistent, but it's, um, high-quality. We have the tile, the barrel tile roofs, and the color schemes are all going to match the architecture. And looking at the entry gates, it's going to be powder-coated bronze aluminum gates. As I said, high, high-quality products. And the Bonnet Hunt Club sign, um, approximately four feet by 14 feet. And you're gonna have the stucco banding with the stone veneer face. We'll have two of those. We'll have two of those. Taking a look at two conceptual renderings, this one of the entrance really shows you how significant the landscaping is. It doesn't quite capture, you'll see directly to the right side of this image, but that's where that massive banyan tree will stand. But we wanted to provide many, many landscape opportunities within this parkway buffer. We're saving a handful of pine trees, and we're also adding in some native oak trees for shade trees and a lot of other types of shade vegetation as well. And looking at the parkway buffer rendering, that faces towards the east along Hood Road. Again, it's consistent with the rest of Hood Road. It's not just a pocket. You drive past it and you say, oh, that's the Bonnet Hunt property. It looks like it belongs there. It looks like it fits in, and that's the purpose of this. So I wanted to provide a slide that talks about this PCD buffer that currently exists between Marabella and the Bonnet Hunt Club property. Now, this 25-foot PCD buffer, as I mentioned, it currently exists a berm. It currently has a six-foot concrete wall, and it currently has an approved landscape plan. Now, I know that staff was able to visit the site recently, and there are a handful of trees that may have gotten knocked over due to natural damage, but there is an approved landscape plan for these areas. We have, as I mentioned, met with the Marisol Master Maintenance Association. This PCD buffer was one of the main items that we spoke about. We wanted to talk about how we would come into agreement with the maintenance of it on our side versus their side. It's something that they want to continue conversations with us with. It's not something that they wanted to come to a resolution with at this point, but we have our door open for that. And I also wanted to mention that our landscape buffer on the Bonnet Hunt Club property that runs directly adjacent to this PCD buffer, we're only required to have an eight-foot landscape buffer, and we are above and beyond that. We're providing 10 feet of landscape that come in many different varieties of heights, including sable palms for the taller palms. We're providing many Japanese blueberry trees for shade and structure, and then we're also providing some Giotrofa trees for, sorry, my bad, liggustum trees for some accents with some low plantings as well. And again, I also wanted to mention that we do have those front setbacks pulling these homes closer to the road and away from that PCD buffer as well. This is a typical cross-section of the property boundary that can either be mimicked on the south property boundary or the west property boundary, and what this shows here is the Bonnet Hunt Club over towards the left-hand side, the Marabella over towards the right-hand side. It shows that existing berm, the existing concrete wall, the approved landscape plan based on the plans that we went off of, and our landscape plans with the 10-foot landscape buffer and the setbacks as well. So on top of having significant landscaping that's above and beyond what's required, plus the additional width in the landscape buffer, we're also providing spectacular architecture. We have worked extremely hard with staff on this architecture. We went through many, many rounds trying to figure out what's the appropriate style and type for the architecture of this project. Currently, right now, we have three models of homes to choose from, and each model has the availability of three different styles: Spanish, island, and island contemporary. As I mentioned, they're 2,100 through 2,400 square feet, three to four bedrooms, two-story. We do have a designation plan to allow us to make sure that not one style is directly adjacent to another and that there's no identicals on the other sides of the road. We also, the way that our lots are laid out, we have, our initial submittal was a zero lot line submittal, which is very popular in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. You see it in a lot of communities that currently exist here. But within some discussions with staff, we made some modifications, and we pulled the homes away from the lot lines. And what that does is it helps the maintenance of the homeowner. They don't have that owner maintenance easement off to the side that actually sits on their neighbor's lot. So it helps with that. They have a three-foot and a seven-foot setback, which separates the homes by 10 feet. The other thing that that does is we're providing four-sided architecture. We're not providing zero lot line architecture. There's not one home that has a blank wall on it. So it's almost like you could call it a modified zero lot line layout with the four-sided architecture. And the last thing I want to point out with the architecture, and I'm going to flip through these slides, that's Model Two and Three, is that these are the typical elevations of a typical model. This one happens to be Model One Spanish style with the left and right sides, plus the rear elevations with materials, but on top of that, we're providing options for specialty side, side, what's the word I'm looking for? Specialty side upgrades. So any of the architectural homes that are sitting adjacent to common spaces or spaces where there may be pedestrians using the fitness areas, we've added some extra details to those particular lots. And there are four lots in our site plan that have that, and those are specially designated on our architectural designation plan. And we do have our architect here tonight if there are any questions specifically regarding the architecture. Moving along to the models, we are going to provide a temporary model center. Everything will be built in one phase. And I just want to run through really quickly. I've talked about a handful of these waivers already. The first waiver that we're requesting is that front setback reduction, and again, it just really helps with pulling those homes up to the road, to engage the road, to allow the bigger yards for more use, and to really pull them away from the Marabella areas. Number two, the side setbacks. Again, it's the modified zero lot line that we're going for on this, which really helps with the maintenance of the site and the flexibility of it. Number three, the minimum lot width. Providing a smaller lot for these homes allows us to have the increased recreation, the increased open space, and the increased amenities for such a small community. The fourth thing, the minimum lot size, again, it goes hand-in-hand with the previous waiver. Reducing the lot size allows for more space for the open space as well. Maximum lot coverage, we're able to put a sizable home on some of these lots to have a sizable amount of square footage under AC and still allow for the open space opportunities. And number six, with the minimum PUD development size, again, the lot itself is stuck on all four sides. It cannot get bigger, so this was an ultimate request that we had to go for with this. So on behalf of the applicant, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to my presentation. I just want to conclude that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent and it's appropriate for the surrounding land uses. It's really gone through this past year an extremely high level of review with your staff here at the city of Palm Beach Gardens, and we feel extremely confident, based on their comments and responses and our modifications, that we, right here tonight, are proposing just an exceptional product to you. We're providing above and beyond landscape points. We're providing an increased landscape buffer. We have the density underneath, the required density or the maximum density. We have increased setbacks. Our recreation open space is above and beyond, and really, we wouldn't be standing here tonight presenting this project if it weren't for the support of the Planning and Zoning Board with their approval and the staff that you have here tonight. So we feel very confident, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Staff, do you have anything additional?
Very brief, we would just like to highlight just a couple slides that Ms. Plunkett has not covered, although her presentation was excellent and very thorough, so we will only highlight just a couple slides.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Peter Hoffeins, Planning Manager here for the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Sorry you're not feeling well tonight. I hope you feel better. Just want to thank the applicant. It was a very thorough presentation. Just wanted to point out a few things. Just to reemphasize the trees that they'll be protecting on-site, there's a really large ficus tree that will be along the road. That'll be a great focal point and something that's really nice to save. In fact, when we went out there to verify their tree survey, our city forester, Mark Hendrickson, you could see him in the picture there, could not help himself but climb in that tree, and we had to get a picture of him up there. As you know, he's been with the city for a very long time and takes a lot of pride in the landscaping, and so saving this tree is an exceptional part of this project. This project has been under review for quite some time. I just want to thank the applicant for going through with staff on a thorough review, reducing the density, expanding the landscape buffer by two feet, expanding the recreational opportunities and amenities and open space in the project to really make a nice, special project that'll be a great infill for the city. Just want to point out here on compatibility with Marabella, you can see here the existing 25-foot landscape buffer with the wall. Then you'll notice the applicant's landscape buffer there, and the plantings that they're putting in there exceed our code requirement at planting. So we require trees to be planted at a 12-foot height. Their trees are going in at 14. We require our palm trees to be planted at a minimum of eight foot. They're coming in with their palms in that buffer at 10, 14, and 18 feet of height. So this was something that we looked at a lot to make sure that it was going to be a compatible project. In addition, the way that the homes have been presented on the lots is to maximize the rear yards, so they're not pushing the homes all the way back. Again, that's two things. That helps them sell a great product where they can maximize their rear yards, provide pools and spaces for families, and again, that pushes the homes a little bit farther away from the adjacent project. And I think that, oh, and the last thing that you'll also notice on here is that in addition to the landscape buffer, there is also lot landscaping for each individual home. So each individual home gets its own palette of landscaping, so the landscaping in this project is way above and beyond, and it's going to be an excellent project. And again, just want to thank the council members. I hope you feel better, and thank the applicant for all their hard work.
Thank you. I actually have one card on this. John, why don't you come on up, introduce yourself, name an address for the record, please.
I'm John Costella. I live at 143 Sedona Way in Palm Beach Gardens. I am the president of the Marabella Homeowners Association. I appreciate your presentation. It would have been nice if you had contacted the association.
Could you talk into the microphone so it gets recorded?
So we could have reviewed the plans. We represent 492 homes there.
Sir, we're not picking you up. Could you repeat what you said to Nicole because we need the microphone?
Okay. I said that I represent 492 homes of the Marabella Homeowners Association. It's the first time I'm actually seeing the plans in its entirety. It would have been nice if you had, you know, come to the association and presented those plans in front of the residents. My concern is the existing landscape buffer that is there, much of it throughout the years has been damaged either by hurricanes and disease, and they've been neglected, basically. So the representation that that berm is full of trees is not really true. A lot of it is missing. So I appreciate that you're going the extra mile and putting the 14-foot trees in and going with a 10-foot buffer, but I still have concerns that the two-story homes backing up the two-story homes in Marabella is going to affect property values in our neck of the woods. So I would ask them to replace much of the landscaping on that berm anywhere that it does not conform to the original, I guess, planting, that somebody be responsible to replant what's missing. So that's my concern. I think they're also asking for almost double the amount of concentration of homes. Lots are much smaller than the city requires, and as a give and take, I think maybe if they're asking the city to consent to having smaller lot sizes, that they increase the amount of landscaping that is required actually to restore what was supposed to be there.
All right, I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, what, ordinance?
Ordinance 22.
Ordinance 22.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. So, actually, I'll start. Carl, on your end.
Well, now I can absorb what he was saying a little bit with the landscaping because I thought the community sticks out, and especially with what's going on with Hood Road and the expansion of Hood Road and the parks we're putting in for the children, I'm going to say a thousand times. So in that area, we're going to be able to absorb a community like that, and I didn't think there was going to be any pushback from Marabella, but does he have a point on anything, Natalie, as far as maybe diseased or things that have been blown over by the hurricanes that can be improved? I don't have a problem with a two-story house against a two-story house because everybody has equal rights to build what's already an existing structure. That's fine, but does he have a point on in that area with diseased trees? And he said it, so I'm saying it.
I think Mr. Sedona was trying to make the point that on the Marabella buffer, which is controlled by the Marabella, is controlled by the Marisol Master Association, there is potentially some trees that have been damaged by disease or have been damaged by the hurricane, and I will agree that when we did go out on-site recently, we did notice that there was certainly some legitimacy to that. Of course, this is on the Marisol property, so that is why I think Nicole was careful to point out in her presentation that the approved landscape plan of record has those trees. So, I mean, it really is a matter of code compliance to ensure that the Master Association has an approved landscape buffer that is consistent with their approved plans. The city staff has not had the opportunity to do an entire tree survey inventory. You know, certainly there's vegetation there, but this project, of course, does not, it's a separate property.
So once this gets cleared out, the accountability of who's supposed to clean up what, and they start building, the accountability on Marisol to come into compliance with what is blown down in diseased trees that looks like it's, you know, off their property or whatever, the city will address that as we go. So you're hearing this, correct?
Correct. I mean, really, it's really through code compliance and ensuring that the landscape plan is maintained in accordance with the approved plan of record, and that falls on the responsibility of the Marisol Master Association, which I know that the applicant has coordinated extensively.
Other than that, I like the project, and I know we will continue to work with the community on these issues. Seems like there's some stuff there that no one knew about, and that's fair. Other than that, I don't have any questions. I think, Nicole, I think you did an excellent job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to it. Thanks.
Mark?
Couple of questions. It's a pretty compact plan, and I wasn't really thinking about it until you mentioned the 25-foot to 20-foot. There's not a lot of extra parking in the project as a whole. When you shrink that front driveway from 25 feet to 20 feet, there'll be less opportunity for people to park, guests to park in people's front driveways. I think there's a sidewalk that runs through the front yards as well in front of the homes. So will there be enough parking if someone is having an event at their home for guests to park? That's one question. I didn't think about that until just tonight, so I apologize for not bringing that up earlier.
Thank you for your question. We are meeting the parking requirements, which we are parking, since each home is three to four bedrooms. We are parking each home at the maximum of the four bedrooms since they have an option of having up to four bedrooms, so each home has the required parking, and then we're going above and beyond that by adding additional spaces near the mail kiosk area, also a couple of guest parking spaces adjacent to the tot lot. So based on working with the code requirements, we are above the required parking for our site.
Okay. Will there be street parking allowed or?
Is that something we do through, like the documents?
I mean, typically on-street parking, there might be some tighter restrictions through declarations, but on communities such as this, there, especially when you have a cul-de-sac situation like that, typically you have on-street parking. It's quite acceptable, but staff too shared your concerns early in the process. But we, staff too, shared your concerns early in the process and we do typically advocate for not just meeting the code, but exceeding the code because we, we all know that parties happen and gatherings happen and you want to have a few extra spaces here and there. You want to make sure you have those spaces. So we do appreciate the applicant going above and beyond the code and parking in that.
Okay. Thank you. As far as the Mirabella, I did ask if the residents and the neighboring communities had any, any issues, so I'm sure that the landscaping buffer will be addressed as the process goes further. You know, I did drive through the property and it is just completely a mess and it's kind of sad to see how fast and how far that property has dropped. I did ask about putting some type of, I know it's not a historical designation and it doesn't have that, but there's not a lot of places in the city of Palm Beach Gardens that might have some kind of nostalgia to it. I did pull out my historical Palm Beach Gardens book and on page number nine, there's a little talk about the Bonnet Creek, so if you'd indulge me for a second. Bonnet Hunt Club Lodge on Hood Road, built in 1968 on leased land, was a private club with some of the best quail hunting, bird, dog, and guides in Florida. The lodge is no longer in operation. The wildlife hunting grounds later became the golf courses of Mirasol and Mirabella. William A. Bonnet Jr. was a retired Navy warrant officer who developed and ran the Bonnet Hunt Club for over 35 years. When first built, Hood Road was a shell rock road. Club members used to shoot their quail and enjoy a quail lunch at the lodge. Famous members and guests include King Hussein of Jordan, Bing Crosby, Peter Pulitzer, and many others. I mean, that's kind of a neat story and unfortunately that story is going to get lost as, as a lot of things do. I'm glad to see the big tree being maintained and some of the others, and I'm glad the name is going to be there. I just would love to see something. I think the residents that live there would probably think, wow, we had some pretty neat people that lived and, and come around this area. I, I don't know if that can be done. I don't know if the applicant would ever look into doing something like that. But I just thought that's such a neat property that maybe there would be some opportunity to do something like that.
No, I think that that's a really unique suggestion. We were just asking that it doesn't, that it's not required for the approval of this, but we do think that's, that's a unique suggestion. But we are maintaining the Bonnet Hunt Club name and possibly some other things in the future as well, which is kind of fun. Thank you.
Matthew, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. It just is an interesting sidelight. If you would go into the Bonnet Hunt Club, Bing Crosby's locker is there and his belongings are still there, so it's kind of interesting. Here's some of the concerns that have been brought to me by the residents at Mirabella. First of all, it's my understanding the community's going to have a small lake and since it's a small, fairly shallow lake, if it's not lined, it seems like it's going to be almost dry during the dry season and so there'll be a lot of frogs and mosquitoes attracted to it. And my question is, is that a concern and how will that issue be addressed? I've got about five or six concerns, but I'll start with that.
Sure. We, when we met with the, the Mirasol Maintenance Master Association, they actually brought up that same issue as well. And our engineer, Todd McLeod, is here and he attended that meeting with us, so I'll let him speak on behalf of that question.
Todd McLeod, McLeod MacArthurian Associates, 1655 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, West Palm Beach, Florida, and I was sworn in. So as Nicole mentioned, we did meet with the master association earlier this summer and one of their strong recommendations was to line that lake due to the lake fluctuation some of the other communities around the Bonnet Hunt Club experience because of the seacoast wellfields in the area. So following that meeting, we did some research on lake lining, provided the liner information, preliminary pricing, things like that to the owner, and they're currently weighing that option. But at this time, we are considering lining the lake basically for aesthetic reasons to try and maintain a consistent control elevation in the lake system.
Second question, the roundabout, and anybody can take it who wants it, the roundabout through the community, I'm sorry, the roadway through the community has a roundabout that won't really accommodate full-size dual-axle moving trucks and I wondered how this would be addressed.
The, that's a great question, council member, and that was actually another item that the, the Mirasol Maintenance Master Association brought up. Marcia, who manages, she's with Lang Management, but she also not only manages the Mirabella, but also many other communities, including the Villa d'Este and PGA National, and they have the same issue. My husband and I actually just recently moved in there and she said, make sure you don't bring a big moving truck in there because it's not allowed and it's going to get stuck. So I think that it's something that we can address within some of the master documents for the community so that the, the residents are aware of that for those size limitations for those moving trucks.
Third question. At the present time, there's a serious drainage problem near the project. When it rains, it just floods all along Hood Road. How will you all address that issue?
I might let Todd answer this, but I know that what we're doing is we're actually regrading that area along Hood Road. Everything will be regraded and appropriately fixed per se to make sure that we meet those drainage requirements. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Todd?
I think Nicole's response is basically the, the answer. So part of this project also includes regrading, reshaping the swale, the drainage ditch along the south side of Hood Road. That was a request of city staff and that's a part of our project. It'll be part of our permits with Palm Beach County moving forward to address some of that ditch work, beautification as well as drainage improvements in the area.
Okay, now the $64,000 question. This is the big issue for the residents of Mirabella and I've talked to, to the city manager about this and gotten input from the staff and Natalie through emails that were sent to Ron. This is the question. The homes on this property are two stories. They're going to be overlooking one-story homes right underneath them. And the concern of the community is that this is going to have an adverse impact on the privacy that they're going to have in their homes as well as the values of these homes. And there are a lot of residents who are very, very upset about this and I'd like to get some assurance that how tall these trees are going to be, how tall are the homes, how much taller are the trees, and how dense will the trees be? And I would really like to see something that would show that so that these people do not have this type of situation where their homes are really adversely impacted by their neighbors. It's a big concern for the, for the, our community.
Sure. That's a multifaceted question, so I'll try my best to answer all portions of it. The heights of the buildings, they are all indeed two stories and the maximum height is 26 feet. Again, we're pulling up the homes as close as we possibly can with an additional waiver above and beyond away from those Mirabella homes. The, the Bonnet Hunt Club homes will want the same privacy that the Mirabella homes are, so we want to provide that happy agreement between the two. Just looking at the existing property photo on the PowerPoint right now, while there's not a home there, a two-story home back-to-back, just looking at the condition of the site, the trees, the, the exotics that are out there, some of just the extraneous materials that are out there, that can't be a nice site for some of these homeowners to be looking at. And I, I, I honestly feel that we've been looking at all of the options for making sure that the best possible opportunity is, is placed within this site plan approval with the landscape above and beyond. We do have heights within our landscape detail sheets, which I know that code enforcement will make sure that we install them above and beyond those heights. So those are on our landscape detail sheets that are, when they get approved, that we are required to plant above and beyond those. And we're actually really happy to meet with you. When we met with the Mirasol Maintenance Master Association, they were our direct connection, but I'm really glad that you attended tonight and I would like to get your contact information because I think that we can definitely work together and keep everybody informed of everything.
Okay, so the, the homes are going to be 26 feet. How tall are the trees supposed to be?
Well, we have multiple heights of trees. So the shade trees, the planting of the shade trees are 14 feet tall and we have multiple, multiple shade trees throughout the buffer. The sable palms that are in clusters along that buffer as well are planted at staggered heights at 10 feet, I believe 10 feet 14 and 18 feet tall that are all staggered heights. And those are just the installed heights and then we have some lower vegetation within there as well.
Okay. I guess that answers the question, but.
May I?
It seems to be, Carl, go ahead. I'll, I'll yell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Yeah, I pretty much lined it up. Go ahead.
Mine was just kind of a continuation of Councilmember Lane. So when I looked at it, I kind of did the math and it looks like there's 55 feet of buffer between both developments, correct?
I-
And a berm. And the berm will have trees on top of it to possi-
Our hope is that the berm will be brought up to code standards, which is the approved-
And the berm is on Mirasol's property.
It is on the, the, Mirasol owns the 25-foot buffer, which has the berm on it.
So we have 55 feet, I guess maybe setbacks isn't the right word, but we have 55 feet of landscape space-
Separation.
-with 14-foot trees on the new property. Mirasol's property is going to be looked at and adjusted to make it better. And then you have how much of a backyard on the new development before you really reach the side of the home? What are the backyards, what's the depth of the backyards? And then what would be the average depth of a backyard in Mirabella? Not that you would know that.
Well, we did take a look at the existing Mirabella, the approximate distances, and while they all are different distances based on the type of model of home, the majority average that we were able to conclude based off of aerial measurements was approximately 25-foot setback for the Mirabella portion of the site.
So we're, just let me keep up with the math. We're looking at 25-foot buffers plus 10, plus 10, and it looks like the, the new development has 25 feet and the Mirabella has 25 feet. I can't possibly see how one home's going to overlook another.
If I could just-
I've got a question.
Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Hold on. Hold on. Your turn.
If I could just make a point. So the 26-foot height is, is the measurement to, to the mean top, kind of the, just below the peak of the roof. The second floor starts at 11 feet with the next window on any rear elevation, maybe additional two feet. So you're really looking at 11 plus two, two and a half, 13, maybe 14 feet on the second floor that anybody's going to be standing at looking in, plus the minimum 50-foot separation, plus the height of the trees that are going in at install at 14 feet with the palms going in at 12, 14, and 18, plus the Mirabella buffer. So, you know, staff looked at all of this and-
Looks like there's 95 feet of separation.
We're comfortable that the compatibility between the two projects-
That's what I'm saying.
I, I mean, really, I, we, I really, I strongly disagree with the statement of that the houses are right underneath. You know, clearly, as you can see on the cross-section, there's a distance approximately 95 feet between homes to homes. You have a 30, just between the rear setbacks and 35 feet of buffer alone, including a berm, including a six-foot wall on top of that berm and including the landscape buffer specs, which have been proposed to be installed at the height of the second floor. You simply do not have the condition where homes are looking into each other's homes. There have been, the standards have not only meet code, but they exceed codes to specifically address this issue.
Then Natalie, I just have one more statement with respect to the Mirabella president showing up. I appreciate you coming in and, and sharing your views, which started this debate, which is how we get from A to B. If it's possible for the Mirasol development with respect to their private-
Privacy?
Yeah, their privacy, then if we can work with Mirasol to make sure the privacy issue is addressed, to me, 95-foot wall-to-wall is a large spot. I don't have, I can't, I can't get where that statement needed it to go, so.
I guess my problem with 95 feet is, I'm not sure exactly how far those pictures are from me, but I would suspect they're about 95 feet at least and I can see them very clearly and I don't see that well at a distance. So if you're 90, the 95 feet doesn't help me. What I would really, would make me feel more comfortable, if I've got, and thank you for the, if I need 14 feet of, of trees that are fairly dense so that the people who own their homes, and then look at how many, there are a ton of, if you'll hit that slide that shows Mirabella.
Just point out again that the trees that are being installed on the applicant's project are being installed at 14 feet and the palm trees, the sable palm clusters that are in that buffer that are being installed are at 10, 14, and 18 feet.
How dense is it?
We've actually increased as of our most, our latest submittal, right before planning and zoning, actually, excuse me, right before the submittal, we added, I believe, 32 canopy trees to that buffer to increase the density of it. And along with all of the points that staff is making, I also want to remind you that we do have typical lot landscaping, additional above and beyond on each of those lots as well, outside of the buffer. With trees, with palms.
Cause I see there's about 25 homes as I look. It is a quick head count.
Okay, we need to move on.
Let me finish. I want, I do have some more to say about this. I have, I have an issue with the development with that particularly, but it seems like if you look at what's happening, we're putting a lot of homes on a really small space.
And their density is, is no different than Trevy, which we, no, no. Hold on, because you've been talking a long time, you've made your point, they've answered it, it's time to move on. And the density at Trevy, which is across the way, they got the same waiver.
Okay, I'm going to finish because I have the right to finish.
Absolutely. You go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a problem with putting so many homes on such a small space and about not overbuilding in the gardens to preserve our quality of life. We, we've got a bunch of serious waivers here. The applicant seeking relief from a development standard for RL3 zoning that requires a 25-foot setback and the applicant's requesting that we reduce this to 20 feet. They're seeking relief from a development standard that requires a side setback of 7.5 feet and they're requesting a seven-foot and a three-foot setback. They're requesting relief from a development standard that requires a minimum lot width of 65 feet and they're proposing 40. The applicant seeking relief from a development standard for the RL-
Matthew, we know all this.
I'm going to finish.
Maria.
And that requires a minimum size of 6,500 feet and they're proposing 4,400 feet. And they're seeking relief from a development standard that requires residential developments not to exceed 35% of their lot coverage and they're proposing 40%. So I think that it's a very, it, it seems like we're putting a lot of homes in a small space and that we're overbuilding and I have serious concerns about the way that the trees are going to protect the privacy of the residents of Mirabella who are calling me and asking me about this.
Can I ask a question?
If I may interject.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on. Go ahead, Rochelle.
Reading through the background information and the information that was submitted to us, Natalie, could you address the waiver situation? It appears that these waivers have been given to many other developments and in the area. And I have a question, in Mirabella itself and neighboring communities, are the houses any further apart than what is planned here or is within Mirabella, the back of one house and the back of another house even closer than some of these? And I did ask, thank you for the visuals, is it possible to get sightline visuals where we would have the dotted line visual of, of what it would be from an upstairs window on one side to the Mirabella house on the other side to see exactly whether there is a sightline there or not?
Well, I, to answer the first part of your question, waivers, our entire, virtually our entire city that has zero lot line product, just to name a few, Mirabella, Trevy, Paloma, Old Palm, Evergreen, Frenchman's Reserve, just to name a few, have received these waivers. The reason why is because our city has historically utilized waivers for a creative- The reason why is because our city has historically utilized waivers for a creative product, allowing for the product to drive the design and to be adequately justified in accordance with our code. So the waivers, and the city's traditional zoning code doesn't actually have zero lot line standard. So if you want to provide any sort of product whatsoever, our entire city in the residential, all the residential communities have utilized these waivers. So these waivers are standard, they are, they have been utilized, but notwithstanding that, each waiver in this particular case has been reviewed and justified by the applicant's provision of additional open space, additional amenities, additional buffering, additional height on the landscaping. Regarding the sightline exhibit, you know, staff really only requires and asks for something like that if we really are concerned that something is not being met. And the applicant in this case has demonstrated so substantially that they've gone above and beyond that address our concerns without having to require a sightline analysis. So no, we don't have a sightline analysis, but you can tell from the visual without doing so that you don't have that condition. So we don't have a specific dotted line exhibit, but I hope that addresses your concern. We were looking at this issue, we believe that the applicant has addressed it, and the waivers have been approved virtually in the vast majority of our developments. These are standard waivers, but on this particular case, these waivers have been substantiated and justified in accordance with their code, and they stand on their own.
Nicole?
Yes.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Can you bring it back up to the aerial that shows the lot with the Mirabella side?
Number 12.
How many homes are you putting in there?
We're putting in 24 homes on our property.
How many homes surround that property on that other line? If you can count them for me, please.
We have 18 on the Bonnet property on the...
You have 18 in the total Bonnet property?
Total against both of those, the west and the south.
There's roughly 30 homes here. There's 24, and you have 18. Hold on, one, two, three.
If you count, it's, I think it's like 27, I can't tell on the corner here.
It's less dense than Mirabella.
It's less dense, yes.
It's less dense than Mirabella.
I mean, I'm counting roughly 27 homes, so my thought process is, I mean, where's, I mean, don't they have equal rights to put in what the same thing is that's bordering their own boundary without being argumentative? It's like you have 24, 27 homes on the outside, and there's 18 homes going on the inside. Seems reasonable to me.
And the homes on the corners here are all crisscross, and their sightlines are right into each other's houses. So Matthew, I appreciate what you said, but...
These are zero lot line homes as well.
These are zero lot line homes as well. And the way we have set this now, the way that the petitioner has set the homes, where they've moved the homes to the front of the setback and gave a larger setback in the back, even removes the homes, the placement farther than these homes are.
So I'm just going to say something to my fellow councilmembers. If we did all these things in Mirabella and we were fair to that developer, should we not afford this developer the same equal fairness as we'd have in the past?
Not only that, but I'd like to say just with all due respect...
Microphone.
Of course.
Mr. Matheson, you know better.
Steve Matheson, attorney for the project, and for the record, I have been sworn in. With all due respect, this is exactly the type of product that we need right now for families to move into the city of Palm Beach Gardens and have a high quality of architecture, have tremendous amenities for children, and at the same time, respect a very high-quality and dense landscape buffer to their neighbors. And that's exactly what we've accomplished working with your staff, and we were complimented greatly by the Planning and Zoning Board for just that result.
Thank you.
If I can respond, Steve, these are beautiful homes, there is no question, but I got 25 people who are freaking out that there's going to be these houses right over them, and that's... And I think change is always something that's difficult and it takes explanation. What we've done by tremendously exceeding the requirements for buffering and showing visually and planting at heights and densities that are much, much more than is required is we're going to give them that comfort. And as they see us go vertical, they're going to find we're good neighbors, and we'll certainly speak with their association between now and second reading and try and give them that comfort level.
Thanks.
Can I just add additionally, to help provide that extra level of comfort, something that's been added to the Alton Neighborhood Plans, we've added a note onto our plans right before presenting to you on our typical lot landscape and our setback plans that reads that homes on back-to-back lots adjacent to neighboring residential partials shall be placed on the lot to maximize the rear yard setback. So we want to assure you that we will be maximizing that setback.
And I want to thank you for that. And I want to compliment you on your presentation. I mean, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I mean, watching this, you really did a nice job of explaining things.
Thank you.
Rochelle, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think Peter put it in perspective before when he said that the upstairs window is only 11 feet and the trees are going in at 14. I just wanted Natalie's clarification on the waivers, that this is something that we do all the time, and there's a space. Going back to the wall for one minute, only because we have this somewhere else, sort of, the issue is with the landscaping on the Marisol side, not with the wall itself. There are no problems with the wall itself.
Okay. The wall, the wall is intact.
Okay.
Quick comment, and then I'm done. I mean, I understand Matthew's concern because he lives in the community, and I think all of us have to remember that we have to make sure that the residents that are there are not going to be negatively impacted, and I respect your concern, I absolutely do. But I think we've all seen what's going to come, and the city would, and the builders wouldn't put something there that's going to negatively, and they're not putting office towers and things like that in your backyards. So the quality of the homes are going to be very comparable. I think you're going to find that, I mean, if I lived in that spot and I knew what was behind in the Bonnet Creek, Bonnet Hunt Club property right now, I'd be afraid to go back there, because I was a little afraid to go drive in there, so I think this would actually be much nicer for the community.
Okay. I do have some questions. The mayor has some questions. The HOA, you were talking about four-sided architecture and the landscaping. Who is actually going to be maintaining the landscaping? Is it going to be part of the HOA fee, or is it individual by each homeowner?
I don't know that at this time that that's been determined. I know that since there's no clubhouse on the property, I would imagine that the HOA fees are going to be relatively low, but of course, that all depends on what the developer ends up doing with the requirements of the HOA, what they end up maintaining.
That would help maintain the integrity of the landscape if it was, you know, one landscape company doing everything for everybody.
Right, and I can look into that for you.
We'll address that as a part of the declaration.
And for the record, the city's requirements in plating does require the landscape buffers to be platted as a separate tract, and we do require common ownership. So that also helps the maintenance and the enforcement of landscape buffers, so that they maintain the integrity and the quality as approved.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have any other questions? Hold on, hold on, hold on. John, I want to thank you for coming. Marisol, it sounds like Marisol and Mirabella need to talk to each other, which it doesn't sound like that has happened. So before we do the final on this with the landscaping and everything else, I think that would be required, that Marisol and Mirabella talk to each other. And it's determined who has to, who is responsible for placing the dead trees on the Mirabella/Marisol side, because if you look at this picture here, that, I guess we're all looking at the same one, you can see that actually the landscaping is more dense on the Bonnet Hunt Club side than it is on the Mirabella side. So I just want to make sure that the landscape is what it is promised to be. We'll hold you to that. We are the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we are green, over 50% of our space is green space. So I understand Matthew's point, I do, but I do also see that, you know, just on those corners there, there, four homeowners are looking right into each other's pools, so I don't want to say it's a moot point, but I do think, and this is, this is about 10, 20, 30 feet right here? So 90 feet is a whole lot more than this is. You know, I'm doing, I'm doing my golfer, my golfer yardages, and I can figure out what it is here. So this, it is substantially longer than this room here. So Matthew, I want to put you to ease, that it is a little bit more space than what this room looks like, and I want to just thank you for doing a great presentation. And as, as we said earlier, the waiver for Trevi was about the same. It was 200, you know, the same density, and they, they're coming in at 55, I believe, 55 units over in Trevi? And they, it was the same requirement for the PUD. Natalie, am I mistaken? The PUD requirement said it's supposed to be 285 units, the last waiver, okay?
The PUD size, okay.
To keep the PUD size, okay?
50, yes, follow.
And so we gave Trevi a waiver...
Same waiver, correct.
The same waiver to do 55 homes on that parcel, because there was no way they were going to be able to get any other space, because you had Turnpike on one side and you have each point on the other side. And this is the same situation here with Bonnet. You have, you're wrapped around by Mirabella. So that waiver is something that is consistent with something, with what we have done elsewhere in the community. So I just wanted to remind that. Anyway, I think we are, are we all done with discussion, everybody?
Wait on you.
Okay.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
So we have one nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will revisit this on the second reading. Thank you very much. All righty. Resolutions for subjects under resolutions. We have, nobody's given any cards, because we can't. There are no resolutions, correct? Okay. Items for council action discussion, is there anything else the council would like to share or discuss?
Football should be still on.
Okay. Doesn't sound like there's any other action and discussion there. City Attorney, do we have a report?
No report.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 10:25.